Hi, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Houston zoning board of appeals meeting for July 26, 2020. Thank you for joining us. I will call the meeting to order because we're allowing remote participation and pursuant to the laws, I'm going to read the following statement into the record. Pursuant to the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law MGL, Chapter 38, Paragraph 20, as well as the select board's emergency order dated March 16, 2020, the zoning board of appeals will be using remote participation for the meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. And at this time, a roll call attendance vote will be taken. John Love, present. JP, buddy?
Present.
Mark Bush?
Present.
Elizabeth Dembitzer?
Present.
Okay, thank you, everybody's here. Also, we would certainly want to hear from all those with an interest in any of these at the appropriate time, so I'd ask if you would like to be recognized that you use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen. And then we will recognize you and give you the opportunity often to unmute yourself. And if you have called in on the phone, Chris, maybe you can help me, I can't, I don't want to get this wrong, but in order to be recognized.
Star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute themselves.
So, so star nine to raise your hand?
Yes.
And star six to unmute yourself. So if you're on the phone, that's what you do. And we would recognize you by probably the last four digits of your phone number, since we don't have names of anybody that's on the phone. There are also a few I see with names like Zoom and iPad, so recognizing, that's what we will refer to you as. Okay, thanks. So the first order of business is the approval of the minutes of July 15 and July 22, 2020. So I know for the board members, are there any comments, questions, edits that you would say, let's start with the July 15 minutes?
None, none for me, John.
Good to meet you.
Okay, I likewise did not, so if.
I think Elizabeth just gave us the thumbs up, so.
Great.
I'll make a make a motions to approve them?
Please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July 15 and July 22, 2020 zoning board of appeals meetings as drafted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, we will, as with all the votes with this meeting, we will do it via roll call. John, hi. Jay?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Liz?
Hi.
A motion carries four votes to none. The minutes are approved as written. The second administrative item on here is the request from the village on the green, the 40B that we granted nearly two years ago, I guess now, it didn't seem that long, but it's been a while, at 245 Washington Street has requested a extension of their start of work due to delays related to the quarantine imposed following COVID. Has everybody had a chance to read the July 15 memo from Peter Conan?
Yes.
I couldn't find it.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, it's short, I'll read it out loud.
Sorry.
So it's from Peter Conan, delayed July 15. Dear board members, I am ready to formally request a six-month extension of time for us to begin our, it's covered, so we can read it, I believe it's development work on affordable housing in Holliston, known as Village on the Green. I have been delayed in pursuing our development for over two years now, since the comprehensive permit was issued to Village on the Green LLC on October 18 of 2017. Parties have been negotiating final terms of the purchase and sale agreement. The agreement has now been revised several times. At many points along the way, it appeared to me that no agreement would ever be finalized. Over Thanksgiving of last year, I was successful in bringing an offer to the owner which was accepted. The final purchase and sale agreement was signed by the parties on February 27 of this year. Less than a week later, the COVID-19 shutdown brought all work to a halt. I've lost over four months, March through June and beyond, and only now am able to work with my consultants to prepare final documents as required by the permit. I will never be able to regain this lost time. Paragraph J point one of the comprehensive permit allows me to apply for an extension of the permit in a timely manner. This letter therefore serves as a quest for an extension. A six-month extension is required. I feel that this amount of time will in all likelihood not be needed, but since October 18, it's barely three months away. I feel it is prudent to have some leeway. This is especially true as the COVID-19 pandemic seems to be resurgent this summer. Please contact me here, always convenient to act on this matter. Sincerely, Peter Conan, manager.
Thanks.
Oh. Comments or discussion from the board members, is there?
So, question was procedurally, can we do it on a, based on general business, or does there have to be opening of the, I shouldn't say that, shouldn't, we shouldn't open the hearing, but can we do it administratively, Karen, maybe that's to you? She said yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fairly certain we've done that in the past when
Agreed, yeah.
As long as it's on the agenda and advertised so that people have an opportunity to weigh in.
Other than the administrative nature of it is confirming that we can do it, I don't have a problem with the request. I mean, I think there was a lot of businesses that were halted by this and six months is on top of the two years that it's already been sitting is a tremendous amount of time. I was, I was kind of wondering what was going on with that project.
Likewise.
I know the applicant of the project petitioners here, you'll see these on the left-hand side of my screen. I mean, the letter speaks for itself, but if anybody has questions to him, I know he's on, I don't have any specific questions, a six-month request is about the best I would, the most I would give. I wouldn't, you know, suggest anything longer. I'd like to see somebody do something with that property. We spent a lot of time on that permit.
Indeed, yep, no, I agree, January 18 is fine with me, Mr. Chairman.
Was any comment or?
No, it seems reasonable to me.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard regarding this request? I'd be happy to hear if we're missing anything. Well, I think Mr. Conan's speaking, if we could unmute him, just a second, you're muted, Peter. You may have to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Thank you, I, I apologize for my scratchy voice. Hello, members of the board, Karen. We have asked for and already received a one-year extension from the Conservation Commission for their order of conditions because we are building into the 100-foot buffer, which we're allowed to do under a 40B. And the Conservation Commission has a lot of extra restrictions and requests that we take a special care, and we've agreed to all those. We would like to begin the site work, which is going to take four to six months as soon as possible. I think we can get the material to Karen, which is outstanding, which is a final construction mitigation and erosion control plan, which I'll have next week. I have it now, it's 90% complete. And also the final architectural drawings, although I must say, as an architect, as the architect myself, we reserve the right to make changes based on what our buyers tell us they would like to see. So I'm reluctant to do 100% working drawings, I can certainly show you. Floor plans, elevation, cross-section, framing, and all the things a building inspector would need, but we are going to need to have a modest amount of flexibility. All the homes will be the same, both the affordables and the market have a one-car garage, three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and of the 16 homes, I believe there are 12 that will have a walkout basement, because we're building on top of the knoll. So we would very much appreciate the six months to interact together and, and begin.
And thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this? Okay, in that case, we'd entertain a motion to, to grant their request for an extension.
Comment the motion that we oops. Let me just grab the agenda. Lost my screen here, I apologize. I'll go, Jay, make a motion, make a motion to provide a six-month extension to Village on the Green LLC to January 18, 2021, to complete their, their paperwork and submit to the town.
I'll second that. Seconded, any further discussion?
I just commented, I believe if you had six months to, you get February, not January.
Letter was dated July.
Yeah, but it goes from the when the permit was.
Oh, I see, well, the permit is up on October, so that would be November, December, January, February, March, April, so. Or does it go from the date of the request, I'm not clear.
I, I think it's cleaner to extend the permit itself by a fixed amount of time, so maybe put it that way more. Instead of putting
Maybe we just six months from the existing expiration date in the
Yeah.
All right, so I will make a motion, amend my, my motion to extend the permit for a six-month period beyond the existing expiration date.
Well, seconded.
Seconded, any further discussion? Roll call vote, all those in favor of approving the extension of this, by saying aye. John, aye. Jay?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion carries, so the extension will be put onto the permit. Good luck and.
Well, thank you so much, I, I'm still very excited about this job and we're all set to go, we just need to put some more paper and drawings together. I much appreciate this, thank you all.
Welcome.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, so then, it being, I believe, 710 was what we needed to get to, we have a dimensional variance at 120 and 120A Goulding Street. Do we have a any type of presentation of the proponent?
This is Joyce Hastings from GLM Engineering, and I represent the applicant. Could I share my screen?
That's up to Chris, you're welcome from my perspective.
I'll say Joyce.
Do we allow that, or do you just show the stuff?
And, and John, I'm sorry, I may have missed it, 799 Washington is not happening.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, did I jump ahead, did we? Yeah, um.
Okay.
I apologize, that cut, it's not on the, I just skipped over, I'm sorry. If we could skip back, first one is 799 Washington Street, continued public hearing. And Karen, we got a note, they apparently, a new attorney involved and was looking for continuance, is that still the case, or?
Yeah, actually, I'm, I'm here just to answer any questions, that's okay.
Thank you.
George Richards, representing Tony Mitrione, the owner of 799. And yeah, I was just recently brought into the case, and I'm sure that's frustrating for you folks. But we are working with traffic engineers, in my opinion, it seems from limited knowledge I have, that the access, egress, and you know, safety issues of the traffic situation are probably the biggest, is the biggest concern.
I think absolutely, that was.
And so we've contacted a number of traffic consultants, and I, I don't know if there's a solution, but I figured tonight I'd be happy to listen to any input you chose to give me, whether it's on the traffic or other issues, that I can go back and be able to respond at your next meeting.
Okay, um, well, we'll let anybody that's in the audience do it, but before you do, I, I think I'll try to speak for the board to get a sense of the questioning and concerns that came up, as you've noted, a lot have to do about traffic. Since that site operated as a service station some years ago, the traffic control situation at that intersection has been significantly changed, and there's a lot of concern both about vehicular traffic and protection of the pedestrian traffic on there, and consequently, there was a lot of discussion about specifics for entry and egress from the site because of how it went, what kind of turns would be allowed. That also led to questions about what the, the extent of traffic was and how it operated here, so, and I think a lot of the response that we got at the last meeting had to do with a similar station that the owner had in Chelmsford that had a somewhat similar situation. And I don't think that met anybody's concerns as, as the answer. And I, have you had a chance sort of look at the materials that are, you know, have been, I know there's been letters from citizens in the town that brought up, I think legitimate issues that we, I guess one that came since the last meeting at least, and one or two before that, so I think those all were.
Particularly the memo of Mary Greendale.
Yep, Mary's came in late, later than last meeting.
I'm trying to, you know, gone through that, but I'm trying to sit down with both my client and other professionals as being mainly be needed in terms of landscaping and traffic. One of the questions we had though is, the traffic consultants that have contacted ask whether you want a traffic assessment, because their opinion is that, you know, this is not a big, big traffic generator, that it's more the safety, access, circulation issues, and I just want to get a handle on where the board wants us to do both of those, or is the more concerned the, the circulation and access?
I, I think it wasn't that it was viewed as a traffic generator as much as the access from the road and from both the eastbound and the westbound lanes from Central Street that kind of tees into it, and the impact on the side street, Green Street.
Green Street and the sidewalk area, I mean.
And then the impact on sidewalk and pedestrian, particularly with the parking along that street and the, I think visibility was one of the issues that was brought up because of parked cars and whatnot.
I guess I'll be quite frank, you know, after looking at the letters and looking at the site and et cetera, it seems like it's an uphill battle. Is there support on the board that we get creative and somehow make the site work versus having it sit there undeveloped as it has been for quite some time?
I, the, the board has really had no discussion beyond what questioning was done, so I guess I would open that to the board if, if anybody has, I think.
I just don't want to waste, you know, Mitri's money and your people's time and my time over something that if everyone thinks this is a horrible situation, that without complete reconstructing on the site and knocking down the building and starting from scratch, which he can't afford to do. Whether there's, or any appetite for a subcommittee who maybe we can work with to try to see how we can make the traffic work. But I'd love your input, if you're not willing to give it, I totally understand, but it might help us all a little bit.
Well, I had, we had, there was an additional concern besides the traffic, and I think one of the letters points to it too, is like the size of the awning, we had asked for a kind of rendering of what this is going to look like, you know, being the middle of our downtown, so, you know, I've been waiting to, to see that.
Yeah, and I know he's worked on that in terms of getting elevation plans showing what, you know, visually the site's going to look like, so I will hopefully have those to you shortly. And also discuss with him whether he can reduce the size of the awning.
I think we wanted to, I don't want to speak for the entire board, but this is Jay.
No, I understand.
Yeah, I think we wanted to see, in fact, a depiction of, of a proposal, what we saw was very basic and preliminary, so, you know, aesthetics are important, seeing that it is in the downtown district and the business district. It's a part of the town. In terms of your first question though, about the, the, the board's position on this, I don't think, you know, we're, we're fairly neutral in the sense of, we're only gonna, we're only gonna fact find on what we've seen, and we've seen.
You haven't seen very much.
No, yeah, I mean, traffic certainly was a, is a, is a consideration, because that's a funky lot in the way it comes out.
Yeah.
With, you know, with some supporting, and it doesn't have to be full, full-fledged traffic impact study, but some supporting data that, you know, the proposed circulation isn't going to create a public health and inner safety issue, I think would go a long way. So you asked initially, you know, what, what we would like, I think something with, with that supports the, the proposal
Yep.
that we can rest on would, would go a long way to this board.
Okay, that's very helpful.
Yeah, and I guess the other issue that we really have had, it's been raised by a couple of people with input and never got that far in the, in the hearings was the whole concept of the appropriateness relative to the historic district zoning, which has changed since the original service station went in there, and, you know, I, I think that's one that still needs to be addressed and will come up, but there has been zero.
Terms of the design of the building?
Pardon me?
Terms of the design of the building?
I, I think it's, you know, yeah, it's, well, the overall view and the appropriateness of the, the use and whatnot, I mean, it has going for it that that was, that's been a historical use, but it also with the town since then changed the start district goals, and I think Mary Greendale's letter lays that out pretty
Yeah, okay.
Well, so I, I think, but as I said, and echoing Jay's thought, we really, I, I think I can only speak for myself, but I sense for the others that have come into it fairly neutral are waiting to, to get convinced that it's right or wrong or appropriate or not, because it's been there and, you know, we know it worked as a use, but things have changed since then too, so it needs to stand on its own merits.
Okay, so that's very helpful.
Okay. Yeah, that being said, if, if we do continue, it is a month appropriate, or what's, would you be?
I mean, my gut tells me, yes, we want to make, get this, if I'm going to be involved and we're going to make this happen, we should be able to meet with a traffic engineer, you know, later this week or next week, and, and make sure we have the design drawings available in the next couple of weeks as well. I will talk to Tony tomorrow to determine that, but I would think a month, when is your next meeting, I guess, first question?
I guess we need to set that if we're going to do it, I mean, we, if, if you would rather do it further, and I, I'm personally would like to make sure it's done correctly and that we do the right thing, this is a, you know, a significant investment on your client's part, it's a significant piece of the town, so.
I would agree, I think he wants to move forward, you know, diligently, but there's not, there's no urgency, and it's more important to get it done right.
Yeah, you tell us what it will take, because I think at this point, the onus is on you to, to get the right information and do it appropriately, and we're.
So yeah, I defer to you, I don't know if you know when your October meeting would be, or do you meet once a month, or how often do you meet?
Yeah, typically, we do meet at least once a month, typically it's once a month, we probably would be for, no, no, okay, so we've got a 40B going on, so we've been meeting in between, but trying to dedicate to that, because it takes a lot of time, so.
If we go to sometime maybe early.
Third Wednesday, Karen, is that what our? And let's see what that looks like.
If we could do something maybe in early October, depending on your schedule, you know, maybe six weeks out. But I sense that we could make it in four weeks if we need to.
So we would be, if we go with the third Wednesday in September, would be the 16th, so that would be short.
Although we don't have. There are no other filings at the moment, so it would be issues that are continued only for the 16th, unless you wanted to push it out another week. Chris has somebody who's looking to make a filing, but we haven't received it yet.
Okay, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how about your feeling would be if we, we put it up for the 16th, and if can't get the information, I will let you know like a week in advance to put that, you know.
Well, maybe if we go for the 23rd.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, let's do the 23rd, I've got another, another board meeting on the 16th.
That, how's everybody's schedule, because 23rd work?
23rd works.
Yeah. One good thing about this whole COVID thing is people's availability has gone up remarkably.
It doesn't matter where you are, you can be available.
Yeah, and I guess where you are probably going to be.
So that would be great, if you want to continue it to, if you're willing to continue to September 23rd, the sooner I have information, the sooner I'll provide it to Karen, you know, in as far as advanced as possible.
Okay, do we need Karen to get any kind of extension on acting, this has been, we haven't closed it, but.
You just need to continue it out to a date in time certain.
Right, just, but we don't need anything from them saying that, you know, we're not getting into any regulatory issues.
Yeah, we did, I did send an email requesting a continuance to your next meeting.
Okay, I think you're referring to if there's any time sensitive issue, and with the hearing open, there's.
We're fine.
Yeah, in terms of approval. Yeah, we're happy to sign any extension needed.
Okay.
If it's, if it's beyond, if it's beyond the dates.
All right, if the 23rd meets, I would welcome the motion to continue that hearing for.
So I'll make a motion that we continue the special permit application made by William Harvey for the property located at 799 Washington Street until our meeting on October 23, 2020.
September.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wait, September?
Is that September or October?
September.
Oh, September 23rd, 2020.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Yeah, check your calendars. Make sure if you were looking at October, that September still works, but. Okay, all those in favor of granting the continuance, uh, so if I'm saying aye, John, aye, Jay?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Okay, so it's continued till our meeting on the 23rd and if you get information, um, that needs to, just submit that to Karen and.
We'll do so.
Act accordingly. Uh, if there's anyone in the audience that has further information, we'd also, uh, welcome. There's been some letters and, and stuff that's, if we can get that in sooner rather than later, that allows the applicant to address it and, um, us to be aware of it rather than dealing with it at the last moment. So we'd appreciate that as well, but thanks. All right, moving along and I apologize.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. So thank you. It's nice meeting you.
Likewise.
And I apologize for the false start on this one, but, uh, next item on the agenda is the, dimensional variance at 120, um, 128 Goulding Street. So Joyce, if you can.
Yes, I'm going to, uh, Joyce Hastings from GLM Engineering. I'm going to share my screen. Uh, can you see the locust map that I have put up? Oh, no.
Here it comes to a sec. Yep, now we're getting it.
So this is 120 Goulding Street. Goulding Street is here. We have Alden Road. This is the old Marsland Institute. Uh, it's been a residence since, uh, for, at least since 94. There's a house here. I've got two existing dwellings on the same property. This is 120 Goulding. It has frontage here. Again, there's a three-story house here and a two-story, uh, dwelling here. And what we're trying to do is to put these two houses on separate lots. Because they, th- this was a lot that was reconfigured in 1994, I can't use the, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81L, that allows me to divide two existing dwellings that are on the same lot. And I have to go through it, what's called a definitive subdivision process in order to create these two lots. Um, and what we have right now is this is a, an access easement, uh, that provides access to these two houses, to this house at 110. There's a driveway here for, uh, 128 and there's also a driveway for 140. And we're going to be, we're looking to do a definitive process, but once I put my, uh, my roadway in, like I show you another sketch, we would do a configuration, something like this. And our goal is simply to be able to meet, uh, the zoning regulations for lot area, lot width and lot frontage. Uh, when I do that, and this, this is in a, uh, residential district, requires 30,000 square feet, 120 feet of frontage, uh, which I will have, I have a table down here that shows what the resulting lots will be, by creating this. Uh, this accessing utility easement will remain, again, providing access to all the other lots. We are not looking to increase the number of houses or the number of, um, dwelling units on this, on this site. All we're looking to do is to simply place the two existing dwellings on separate lots. And when I do that, when I create this, I end up with a deficiency for front yard setback for this existing house. It's required to have 30-foot setback from what would be the street and I would end up with 17.6, because we don't own, you know, this is all, uh, this is our property line over here. I can't make this any, a narrower to create that extra 30 feet. There's also, we're not creating this issue. There's a, a 14.8 foot setback, which was a 20-foot side yard setback. That exists now. We're not creating that, um, deficiency. But, uh, but that's the reason we're doing this, so that we can go before the, uh, planning board with a definitive plan to create these lots, uh, and, but first recognizing that we have, uh, two dimensional setbacks that we're looking for a variance on. Uh, to give you an, oh, an idea of what the, uh, what the properties look like. As you can see, so again, this is, this is our house here and our house here. This is the main driveway. There's a driveway here, here. So this, none of this configuration will change. We're not proposing to do any changes on the ground, just simply, uh, create a paper, a paper street. And that's, uh, that's our request simply. Any questions?
Yeah, I think the board had any questions of the.
This is Jay. Um, is the intent to create and subdivide the parcels? So that I assume the, the one with the, the issue relative to frontage, is it going to be sold or?
At the, no, not, it's not their intent to sell it right now, the, uh, it, but it's, they're trying to prepare for the future so that, um, that the two parcels are on their own, they are separate, uh, entities. But they could be sold.
Okay.
Jay, this is Karen. Just wanted to clarify that you're, um, aware of the prior special permit for the improvements to that dwelling at 120A.
And this is 120 right here.
120 is the, the, the nearest to the new road, the nearest to Goulding.
Correct. That's the one we're looking for the dimensional variance on.
Yeah.
And, and the, the limit to that was that it was only supposed to be family members or non-renters who lived in that, correct? That's really.
Yes, that was, um, a few years back when they came in for a special permit, um, to, as I believe it was to replace the, was it? To replace the bill, but it, yeah, it was an existing situation. It'd been there for many years in the family and hope was to keep it that way. And, um, as I recall, we tried to write the permit to exactly allow the, the identified use, which was to continue to use it as a second home on the, um, property, but not to turn into a rental unit or, you know, something to that effect. That was the way it was written.
I think I remember that, um, I think it's when I first joined this board. Thank you, although I'm not a voting member there.
I think it was 2015.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm reading it now. It's, um, occupancy shall be limited to family and non-paying guests as represented.
I did remember, I remember we either did that, it was this property or we did this for another property as well. Honestly, if I knew that, if the petitioners were here, the applicant, I'd be able to look at their face and tell you if this is anything. So this, this request, unless we condition the uses of the lots technically would irrigate the intent of that, that the prior decision, although our variance would, I would imagine supersede this decision anyway, because we're creating two buildable lots.
Right.
But I guess your point, Karen, is that there was some intent in the last decision.
Right, these, uh, these structures were constructed in, uh, 1930. The, the two dwellings.
Yeah, but you needed a special permit in 2015. Right, to improve them? What was it granted a special permit for?
It was a restoration. I don't know if it was a casualty or what was happening, but some sort of restoration.
I'm trying to recall, but I thought it was.
Yeah, for restoration of an existing detached accessory dwelling.
Right.
So it does seem like the intent before was to say, yeah, you can improve this to be a dwelling, but we don't want it to be, you know, a separate lot, basically. I mean, that's what it seems to be, granting a special permit, or is it just, I mean, it, yeah.
What were you looking for it not to be a rental unit?
Or, or sale. I mean, one of the findings was occupancy shall be limited to family and non-paying guests as represented.
Right, and, and so I recall that, that was specifically, uh, because sale would not have been an alternative since it was one lot and they were doing special permits. So that's why the, um, thing was written to, to not make it, and it wasn't requested to be, you know, an income producing property. It was to maintain something that they'd had, uh, but way to try to ensure that, as I recall. But, um, you know, I, no, I think here you're talking about, uh, and I, I believe, Joyce, correct me if I'm wrong, that the reason that this doesn't qualify for, um, you know, cutting it, it's, it's already that large lot had been previously subdivided. And then at the time, this particular issue had not been addressed, but that took away the, um, I guess we're not supposed to say grandfathering anymore, but the previous rights that, uh, had existed.
Yes, it was, it was, it was, uh, the lots were cut up, additional lots were cut up in 1994.
Right.
Are all of the, um, so access that we're talking about here? Is, is, is the, the street you're talking about? So there's Goulding, I see it.
It's not a street, it's just a driveway.
So what is, what is, what is?
I don't, I've never heard of Goulding Place. It shows up on, uh, on Mass GIS.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm looking at right now. So.
This is, uh, Mass GIS is calling it Goulding Place. So if I turn off the, um, if, if I take that away, you can see, this is the driveway here, the main driveway.
And that's shared by those other residences along the.
There's a driveway off of this one. There's a driveway here, goes to this house and this house, and then it comes up around to this house.
Okay, so there's, there's some, there's some concept of a shared.
Yeah, so you can see driveways underneath. So this, this is basically a, it's a shared driveway.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I wasn't part of this. I'm looking back at my notes. This was before I sat on this board. I, I don't, I don't remember why there was the, um, the condition placed on the use of the accessory or secondary building premises at the time. So I have to defer to you guys. I'm not sure what.
That's unless I'm confusing it with, again, although that, that's my memory. But, um, you know, so I guess, Joyce, a question that, that I have is, again, with, this is being held to a higher standard than the special permit back in 2015. And, um, what is the hardship by, that's here and, and that anything that's limited is self-created? And, um, the, the special permit allowed the historical use that's always been there to be, um, to be continued. So I, I, as I frequently do, I struggle with the barrier of, of what's the hardship that we need to hold.
So the hardship, I think, would be the shape of the lot in that, um, I can't, I can't swing the, a proposed road away. If this could meet all the, the, the setback requirements for, um, a subdivision, which I suppose if they cut off a piece of the house, that would work. But the idea would be, that, I mean, that's why we're looking for a variance. But the only, it, this would meet all the requirements if not for, again, the shape of the lot or the shape of the existing house that we're trying not to change. So, you know, the, uh, the, the planning board has used the definitive subdivision process, uh, with some waivers to allow people to, with large, over, this is a 17-acre parcel. And again, we're not trying to create additional density here at all. They're just trying to create, uh, to, to, to divide these two parcels. This is a very, very, you know, this is a large lot, um, with two functional dwellings and they would really like, in the future, they're both retired and, uh, their daughter has been living in the house and probably since, uh, you first issued that, um, decision. But, you know, things are going to change. I know, um, Mr. Harrington is very ill and at some point, this, things have to be, uh, dealt with, and this is one of those steps. Trying to, um, take a parcel that's got, again, two, two dwelling units on it and try and make it so that they can, uh, keep one and perhaps sell the other or keep them both. There's nothing, there's no immediate plans to sell anything, but they'd like to have something in place that would allow them to do that, um, as they get closer to having to make a particular decision. And again, if, if not for, um, this is a process that the planning board has allowed in other ones, warehouses aren't, don't even exist yet. Uh, when they have large lots that, you know, they just want to divide two up and they don't have enough frontage. They get, you know, they can get a lot of, potentially get a lot of, uh, waivers from the requirements of, of subdivision, uh, rules and regulations. It just so happens that there are two existing, I mean, the, the existing house on, at 20A doesn't meet that setback and because of the shape of the lot, I can't move the road further away.
Okay. One other question i- is that there was a note from the, um, health director, uh, with some notes about, um, septic and whatnot. Are, are you confident that this, I don't know if they're a shared, were they unshared or?
They're not shared. They're, they're, they're on septic, septic, separate septic systems, but we will, um, uh, we will be happy to meet any requirements that the Board of Health has.
Yeah, as long as you're confident that they can, I mean, that's their concern and clearly you would have to if we allow this, but, uh.
Correct. So, and, and we would have to meet his requirements in order to go through the, uh, planning board.
Okay. Are there further questions from the board? Are there any questions from the audience relative to, uh, this application?
Yes, this is Mark J.
Go right ahead, Mr. J.
Okay, um, I believe those houses currently have cesspools. So would they be upgraded and if you sub, subdue these into other houses into development and bring them up to Title V?
I'll push that to Joyce, but I believe we could condition it that way.
So we would, the Board of Health, if, for, if, for example, the, the lot sold to, if the lot was put up for sale at some point, we would definitely, we would definitely have to have a Title V done. Uh, the Board of Health may require that we have a Title V done on that, uh, 120A, before we go through the subdivision process. But again, we would defer what we have to do to the Board of Health.
Okay, and then on the lot that would be left, is it, would it, if it was to be sold, how much of that 15? how much of that 15 acres is buildable, assuming they would sell it?
Well, there is a lot, a large, oops, sorry, I don't mean to make everybody dizzy here. There's an intermittent stream that runs through here, and there's a large wetland, and this was a man-made pond, pool, pond area. So as far as what's developable, we are representing that, we're not looking for any further subdivision at all, and it's predominantly wetlands beyond the area of the house. This whole, this whole back area here is wetland, as you can see.
But if they did sell, it could be subdivided out and all that's left buildable?
Well, one could be, it could be restricted.
Well, do we know that?
Wait, so would the applicant allow us to put a no further subdivision restriction on the larger lot?
I, I would ask them, but my understanding is they would. I would like, I don't think they're on the meeting tonight, but I would.
Yeah, or would that be, Jay, would that be more appropriate from us or from the planning board when they went through the subdivision process?
Could we ask Karen if that can be done at, at the subdivision process, at the subdivision level?
Certainly, either board, it may be more appropriate for the zoning board to do it, but if it's a timing issue and a communication with the applicant, you could leave it to the board. That's my understanding, is that no further division would be allowed. If no improvements are being proposed to the existing driveway, it, it essentially doesn't pass the sniff test as a road, there would be sort of a massive waiver of the road improvements on the planning board's part, and certainly in exchange for any waiver, they would condition no further development.
I, I'm very confident they have no, they, they are, they would be agreeable to, to say that there's no further development.
Joyce, is there, is there any reason why they're not increasing the size of lot too?
No, not at all, I, we just, it, it can be, it can be larger. It doesn't, there's nothing keeping it from that size, and we just put a, a size around it.
Yeah, no, I, I know it's up to the Board of Health, but, you know, they'll perk better if they have more, if they have more room.
Yeah, that, that's true, it may be, we can, when we go to the, if we're allowed to, if we do that, we can always change this, so we can address everybody's concerns, to be sure there's plenty of room. I mean, this is 67 feet, so we have, there is room here to put a septic system, but we can certainly increase the lot to ensure that there's no issues.
So is the planning board going to condition it then?
If, if, if we could do that, I would, I, I would just like to say that to my client, that this is being restricted. I'm, I'm confident that's what they said to me, I just want to confirm that. So if we could have the planning board put the restrictions on it, that would be preferred.
Yeah, it feels to me that that's the appropriate place for it, but I'd have no real qualms about us doing it either additionally or, or as well. But it seems like that's the bigger issue, is the whole act, we're, we're only giving them the ability to request, if we do this, the ability to request a subdivision, essentially.
Doesn't mean that they will grant it either, so.
So they could, you know, my hope would be, and what typically their approach is, is to look holistically at the situation and do what's appropriate there, as opposed to us who are looking at purely the deviations from specific zoning requests. But, uh, yeah, I'd have no issue, I think if that's the intent, or, or for us to make a recommendation to the zoning board, that might be the other way.
And as Karen pointed out, the, the only reason that we would, might be able to do this is because everything here exists, the roads, the driveways and all. And there's really no way to get a conventional cul-de-sac here that would be required if we were increasing the density out here, because of the wetlands. If you saw before, I've got an intermittent stream, and I've got wetlands associated with it all over the place, so that would be very difficult to deal with.
Okay, are there any further questions from audience members? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard in support of this request? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard in opposition to this request? Okay, any last thoughts on board members? If not, I think we, we accept a motion to close the hearing.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing for a dimensional variance filed by Diana Harrington at 120, 120 A Goulding Street.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded, close the hearing. All those in favor, we'll go by roll call, John, hi, Jay.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
All right, thanks very much, Joyce. Hopefully we'll get to this tonight, I'm not certain, and I won't promise you we will, because we've got a pretty full agenda here, but, um, and.
Thank you very much.
Some of us need our beauty sleep, but.
Thanks, Joyce.
But we'll try to, and if not, we'll get to it as quickly as possible. Thank you. All right. Moving along, let me get, pardon me, our next order of business is a public hearing for a special permit, as well as a use variance, two separate applications, for the Hoops Lab at 1490 Washington Street. And.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we skipped one.
I've done it twice tonight, I'm fully on the roll, I'm sorry. Thanks, just get out of here, huh? I, I, good Lord, I was looking right at it too, again, once upon, again, apologies. Next on the agenda is a special permit at 175 Lowland Street. Mr. Brocker, I thought he saw. There you are, I saw you.
Good evening, this is Herb Brocker here.
Okay, thank you. Can you let us know what you would like? And I, I think we've, we've seen some of the literature that's been attached, but maybe you could summarize for everyone what we're doing here.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, did you?
I'm sorry, if you, we've seen some of the documentations provided, but if you could give us a summary of where you are and what you're looking for.
Right. Well, I guess I'm coming about this different, most, differently than most people in that. I have something that's already existing, and I don't have the plan, I have the picture of it, and I'm asking for a permit to do basically what I am doing.
Okay.
So it started 35 years ago, and I bought this property. I was a younger man, and I was looking for a place to put some equipment that I was trying to build a business with. I had the opportunity to buy this, it was a non-buildable lot. I wasn't intending on building a building. So I bought it, and I was able to get some paperwork from the previous owner that had applied for a special permit, for the, it was originally a wetland. They got a special permit approved to fill the wetlands for the purpose of parking trucks, is how they ordered it. And I was, after I bought it, that permit, that order of conditions was transferred to me so I could continue to work on the property, and I had assumed that I had also inherited the right to park the trucks on it. I'd spoken to the local building inspector at the time, Ivan Lopez, about it, and he said, you know, he didn't have a problem with it, basically. So I went ahead to, to try to build something that I could use to, to keep my business going. During that next year or so, a couple of people approached me, the Tuttles actually, to ask me about renting some space. And I guess I'm a little bit from the old school that I thought that I had a piece of property in an industrial area, and I could probably do things that were industrial, and it was a continuation of parking. So they, you know, they rented some space for me. In the meantime, some of the jobs that I was doing had surplus fill, and at the end of the day, when I had a load of fill and I didn't know what to do with it, I dumped it on the lot. And then, you know, later times when I needed some fill, I had the fill to remove and take back, so I, I thought that was a good idea, so I, I was using the lot as a place to, you know, sort of recycle material. Some years later, in 1994, I, some of the wetland vegetation had grown back up over on the, as you're looking at the picture on the left side of it, and, yeah, in that general vicinity, and I had another cease and desist order for, you know, wetland issues. So I was, among other things, had a plan that I submitted that had piles of fill and, and rocks and the things that were going on on the lot, and nobody seemed to be too upset about it. So in the end, that was, you know, resolved, so I continued, basically. So over the years, I had acquired a couple of more tenants, I, the, the fill material is my own, no one else brings fill in there, I don't, you know, sell space to bring anything in, it's just something that's come off of jobs. I'm, I'm sort of in the, the space of my life where I, I'm not working as much as I used to, so I don't, I haven't really done anything. You can see that the fill piles are pretty much grown up with vegetation. In the meantime, the tree specialist company, Rolfe Briggs, had approached me about storing some wood chips, and at the, at the time, they were taking them up to an energy plant. So I, again, didn't see any harm in dumping some chips on the ground and, and putting them in a truck and taking them up to the, the energy plants. That issue dried up, and in the meantime, the owner, Rolfe Briggs, had been researching how to recycle wood chips and, and produce a product that, I believe they call it forest floor litter. It's a mixture of wood chips and some fresh leaves that they run through this big mill called the tub grinder, and they process it, basically. And that's part of what's on this permit, is the application for, it's a one-to-two-day operation, and it happens once to two days a year. So they take this pile of wood chips, which you can see in the, in the lower bin, and that, that was actually ready to be ground, is the term we use, and, you know, that went through this machine and turned into this moss product that they, they sell. They, they sell it and deliver it with their own trucks, they have small trucks, they're not big trucks, six-wheel, like, landscape-sized trucks, and they also have a trailer that they, they deliver with, so there's no heavy truck traffic. There are three loads every year that go out with a, one of those giant trucks, and, and he, you know, we can control truck traffic on this because there aren't that many of them, but the rest of the chips are delivered by their own little trucks for the most part, and that's done over about a six-month period. So it's a recycling thing, the product is, is a byproduct, the chips are a byproduct of their business, their, their business is trees, so they're not doing anything on this lot that is a business per se, other than storing it. Other than that, I think there's a landscaper here who was in this corner on the left, there's, there's four people from town here, one of them is Chris Clancy, the Titan Construction Company, they have an, an area that they store, occasionally put a machine or keep some gurnet curbing and some pipes and some supplies for their jobs. There's a fellow with a truck there and a couple of machines, they're from Whalen, the Rice Brothers, that's the, the red truck that's kind of lined up with the entrance here, next to a pile. And there's George Tuttle and Mike Tuttle, the Tuttle Brothers, those are, that's their area. Mike has two trucks, he goes out every day, pretty much anybody that goes out of this lot goes somewhere else to work, they don't, we don't do any really work on this lot, per se. It's basically a storage area, parking lot. There are four people that live in town who pay taxes in town, who, you know, in the beginning of this, I had a conversation with one of the building inspectors, Ivan Lopez, again, about, that I thought this was keeping people out of their backyards, and, and that in one way, you wouldn't get to visit the, the problems that might arise if, if they were in their backyard, so. Over the years, I have never had anybody say no to anything that's happened here, so I basically, I guess I take that as a yes. In 2012, there was a complaint that came up by a, a person in town who had been flagged for doing something, and he came down and he complained about the, the operation with the, the wood recycling there. And we had a, I had to submit some paperwork to the president building inspector, Peter Tardikoff at the time, and sent him some pictures of what we did, and, and Rolfe had given him a brochure of the material that he uses and, and how he does it. And after a period of time, he basically said that, he told me, as long as you own the property, you can continue to do what you do. So again, we, I took that as a yes, and we have continued to do that up until recently, where I guess the, you know, the neighborhood has grown, the issues have grown, and, and here I am tonight, looking for, you know, to try to, I guess you would say, line the paperwork up with what's happening on the lot. So I don't, do you have any questions that I can answer?
Yeah, I just, trying to picture the location, can you describe, or I don't know if we can, no, this is just a photo, you can't zoom out, but, uh, what's around, which are the other businesses?
What's, what's around it?
Yeah, oh, that's probably better, yeah.
You mean, where it's located, like?
Yeah, I'm.
Okay, this is on Lowland Street, this area above it in the picture here is Allstate Submissions, and there's a fellow named Paul Cohen has a garage in there, the big, there's some big oil tanks out in the back of that property. The property behind me and to the lower part is surrounded by the American Recycling Company, they border my property on two sides, so it's a kind of an island in, in, you know, the sea of other industries. So it, it is now called 175 Lowland, it had an address of 105, which didn't line up with the, other numbers on the street, so we recently decided to call it 175, so it seems to match the other numbers on the road. It's across the street from the property that I guess the Odessa people are interested in, if that's another source of location for you.
I see, and where are the, the nearest residential properties to you?
Well, if you go up, you know, if you came out of the lot and turned right, you're heading towards Fisk Street, so there are four or five houses up at that end of Lowland Street, and the other houses would be down in the Woodland Street area.
Okay, so, but you've got, that's.
And I, in my own defense, I guess, I would say, over the, the years that I have been here, first of all, I am concerned about the neighborhood, I respect other people's lives and what they have to put up with, I have tried to keep this low-key, you know, tell the people who are here where to go with their trucks and what not to do. I, I'm not saying they always have done it, but in general, I think we've done it. I don't believe I've ever had any complaints that I know of, at least it's never been brought to my attention, if there were any, so I think that we have had a history that's relatively clean as far as neighborhood issues, because we don't really do much, we leave in the morning and come back at night, pretty much most of the time, that lot just sits there without anything going on. So, and I have written a letter recently, I could read it here if you'd like, that I'm, you know, given to the people on my lot, that, give them an idea of what I'm thinking of, so it's, it's this truck traffic on Lowland Street. The recent increased truck traffic and, and related issues in the Lowland Street area are the subject of this letter. Although this is not a legal matter, but you, you are prohibited from using this road legally, it is a matter of respect and consideration for the people whose lot, who live in the Lowland Street industrial area and how it impacts their lives. Would you please use Jeffrey Avenue as a heavy truck route from the 175 Lowland Street Yard to Route 16 Washington Street? Please help to minimize the heavy truck traffic noise in the Woodland Street area by using Jeffrey Ave instead of using Lowland Street to Woodland Street as a route to Route 16 Washington Street. Please respect the 7:00 AM start time on the other end of Lowland Street from Fisk Street to 175 Lowland Street, as well for the same neighborhood reasons. Your cooperation would be appreciated by both me and the local residents who have, who have to live with this condition daily. That's something I'm, you know. That's, um, something I'm, you know.
You could make it a condition, right? I mean, they're renting from you.
Yeah.
If I get, if I get complaints, you know, you're gonna have to leave, right?
Okay, absolutely.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, this isn't just about me, really. I mean, obviously it's about me, but these other people. Appreciate the fact that they have a place, um, to, you know, keep their equipment. And I think they would be more than willing to abide by any conditions that help them stay there. Uh, and they're all, you know, decent people and.
Yeah.
You know, sensitive to the situations, I think.
Well, I suspect we're going to see from a broader perspective of the town some, uh, after. The stuff I've heard last night and whatnot.
Right, yeah, I was on that.
Conversation around that, but I, I think, um, my sense would, would be, we would encourage. You to continue to do whatever's possible to, um, to do that because, you know.
Absolutely.
Are located in a.
Yeah, and it's, it's only.
Area and, and there, it's just that when that overflows and.
Right. No, absolutely. I mean.
Self is, but the traffic to and from it.
Right. I mean, there are only four trucks on this lot as it is. So it's not terribly difficult to manage that.
Yeah.
But I agree, absolutely.
Further questions from the board?
I guess I had a question about the, um, so. These are all people who have Monday through Friday, but also weekend businesses. I'm just wondering, you know, what, where do they come in and out? Like, what are the hours they come and go?
Um, I would say generally seven o'clock in the morning and home at five to six, I guess, something like that for the most part.
And that includes the weekends?
I would say Saturday. There's nothing that goes on on Sunday. Right. And not, I, I don't know if it's every Saturday, but there are Saturdays, yes. I mean, the wintertime is pretty quiet, certainly. Um, this is more of a seasonal thing, but.
Yeah. The Ralph's process that you do a couple of days a year where he does that, is it? I have never seen or heard, is, is it particularly noisy and or?
It is a noise, absolutely. It's a noisy thing, yes. That would be, I think there's a two, three portion that allows for something like that, I guess, is, is how I understand it. But it, it definitely is noisy, but it's very limited in terms of the, the duration for, you know, a year's worth of time. And sometimes it's only once a year. It depends really on how many chips accumulate and, and how fast they do accumulate. It's when they, when they, you know, they basically fill up the bin and when it's full, they, they grind it. It's a function of that.
Yeah. Well, again, I guess you're far enough from people living there that, that should mitigate it some, but. And you have to get along with your neighbors, but, um.
Yeah, I, I hear that.
Further questions from the board? Okay, there are questions from the audience of this applicant.
I have a question.
Okay, um. Michael Brumberg, uh, you, I think, is that, is that where that came from?
Yes, that came from Mike Brumberg. Yeah, I own the, I own the land right next door to Herb and right across the street. Um, I think about a month ago, we had. A meeting with you. If you remember, my lawyer, David Click, talked to you.
Correct, yeah.
And we, we had some renters on our property. And they were there for years and they were told to vacate. Um, I'm not saying that Herb should vacate his property, but I, I just wondered why I was treated a little bit differently. Um, I, I actually have a bunch of questions on what's going on over there.
Okay, maybe, as I recall, when you were with us, you were the, um, building inspector. Did essentially the same. I mean, he did a cease and desist. And as I recall, the discussion was that. You needed to get permitted to do what you did. Um, you, you were not applying for a permit, but appealing his decision, as, as I recall.
Correct, correct. I was al, I was also.
Seen an application for a permit to have that happen. And I, my reading of. The building inspector's letter to Herb is, is very similar that he claimed he's not, you know. Doesn't have the rights to do what he's been doing. And I believe he's. Try to correct that, if.
Yeah, I, I under, I understand that, but I was also told that I'd have to go in front of the planning board. For the decision that Herb's doing right now in front of you. And I think that if I was told that I needed to go in front of the zoning board. It's a hu, it's a very big difference than going in front of the planning board in my position. So I was, I was misled that I was told by the building inspector that in order to do what Herb's doing. Across the street, sixty-five feet away, I'd have to go in front of the planning board where Herb has to go in front of your board. I, I don't, I, there's a big disconnect there.
Okay, I, I can't speak to that because I don't know what.
No problem.
But I, I don't know what the.
This is all recorded, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, cool. Um, okay, so do I get to continue on or?
If you've got further questions, yes, please.
Yeah. So basically, there's a drainage ditch. I don't know if Herb wants to pull up the. The, the, the plan, but there's a drainage ditch when this was all installed. And New England Emulsions and myself have been brought to what is called. Conservation Law Foundation, who are basically tried to get sued. Um, and Herb has not followed up, I would say. Not to throw him under the bus, but I know we've tried numerous times to have him involved with. Let's just say cleaning up his trench, where I. Think I spent thirty-three grand. I think New England Emulsion spent fifty grand. And I don't think Herb spent any money cleaning up that trench. And I, I, I wonder why, when he has no nifty's permit. Um, for all of Ralph's Briggs discharge of this compost and earthen products that keeps running. Into the wetlands that we drink out. So there's, there's a big concern there, that it's, it's on our deed. And Herb hasn't acknowledged it at all. And it, and it's a big concern. I mean, it's not a little concern. It's not a little amount of water. It's not clean water that comes off that property. Um, like I spent, like I said, we, we've spent thousands and thousands of dollars, New England Emulsion and myself. To maintain clean water discharging from our property. Yet Herb doesn't have to follow those special permits. It, it's very frustrating. But once again, I don't know how that, that works for anybody.
So. I'd like to, uh, respond to that, actually.
Sure.
When I purchased the land, there was an order of conditions on it, which included creating the drainage soil that you're talking about. So I am the person who created this thing in the first place.
You're right.
That's my contrib, contribution to it. I built it.
You built it, but you haven't maintained it since then, since nineteen.
And, and also I'd like to add that I have left a, a pretty good portion of vegetated area between. My land and that ditch. And there is a crushed stone barrier with some, uh, filter fabric in it. That, that any water that leaves the property has to run through. And if, if you were gonna look at whose water is more, uh. Stirred up, I guess, I would think it would be on your side of the fence. So I don't know.
My water doesn't discharge Herb into the, into the trench.
Well, I, excuse me, gentlemen, I, I think that's really an issue for the conservation agent and the conservation commission as opposed to.
Agreed.
So I think let, let's keep our discussion and question.
So I have a, I basically have another question that the D, the DEP. In order to manufacture compost, leaves, wood chips. Into a product that is used, the DEP needs to issue that permit. And under that permit, there are guidelines for noise decibels. And it does not operate twice a year. It's three times a year. And it's over ninety-seven decibels. And the building inspector has tested it with a noise meter. So I'm held to, I don't know, standards. I would assume that Ralph Briggs should be held to standards. But, I mean, who, who am I to say that? You know, it's like the trench. So, I mean, there's more to this piece of property than just, oh, Herb's been doing it for a little while.
Okay.
And if, and if the consistency's there, I, I have fifty-seven acres across the street that I'd love to come in front of you. The, the zoning board and do the exact same thing Herb's doing sixty-five feet away. I'm all for what Herb's doing, but I want to do the same thing across the street.
Okay, well, you, you're certainly welcome to apply, but I'd like to keep the discussion here to this permit, because that's what.
Sure.
This board's here for. So, yeah, you're absolutely welcome to, and, and we would, um, invite you to.
Okay, but there is no permit in Herb's property. There are no permits.
That's why I believe he's here tonight.
Okay, I'm just making it clear that there are no permits for what he's doing.
That's correct. And that's why the inspector sent him a letter and told him.
Okay.
To try and get them, uh, and.
Awesome.
Apparently, from my reading, it, it, his building inspector disagreed with his predecessor on what was. Allowed by previous permits, so.
Okay.
You know.
I just got, I actually have one more question.
Sure.
There, there are chemical trucks from Ralph Briggs being stored on the property. There's three chemical trucks. We have videos of these chemical trucks. We don't, we don't know what's in these chemical trucks. But they take these chemical trucks off the site, in the site, off the site. And I'm pretty sure Karen Sherman was at the federal courthouse with us. And she has a traffic study of how many trucks enter and exit that property a day. And some of these trucks are chemical trucks. I mean, they're, they're spray rigs. And I, from my understanding, I don't know what, I, I don't know what you do with them. I mean, I. I don't know how you regulate that. I, I really don't.
I'd like to respond to that one as well, I think. I think, uh, from my knowledge, I could verify this, but Ralph Briggs. Has a, uh, tub down in his yard where his operation is. And he takes a bag of composted material and he puts it in this thousand gallons of water. And they basically bubble it for, I don't know what period of time, twenty-four or forty-eight hours. And they. Take the nutrients out of the bag of compost and that is the chemical that he is referring to that is in that truck.
Can you tell us what the, um, the volume of traffic of those trucks is?
On, on this lot?
Are they in and out every day or?
There are the three trucks that leave. Uh, two trucks generally leave in the morning, the Tuttles. Um, sometimes, uh, the other dump truck leaves. Ralph is in and out occasionally, isn't he? Every day, whenever, I guess he has a load of mulch to sell. He doesn't. I mean, I, I would invite you to come down and, and watch that lot. I think if you came down at any, any given time, you'd see there's not much going on. I think, uh, you know, what you've heard might be slightly exaggerated, but. It's pretty low key. And, and I, like I say, from my defense of my history here, and I think history shouldn't matter. That until more recent issues arrived here, that I don't believe anybody ever had an issue with what was going on here. And it hasn't really changed.
Okay, uh.
I.
Do you have another question, Mr.?
Well, I actually, Karen Sherman is on the meeting. And she can tell you, I'm thinking it's two hundred and twenty entrances and exits per day. And that was logged in federal court by your town traffic study. I'm pretty sure that's the number. I don't have it in front of me, but they did a traffic study. It was supposed to be focused on Michael Brumberg's property. But they put it in the wrong spot and it got Herb's location. So there's, there's a lot going on during the day.
Well, I'm sorry, there is no way two hundred and twenty trucks ever came into that lot, period. No way ever. I don't care what study you're referring to. There has never been two hundred and twenty trucks in and out of that lot.
Okay. I mean, I'm just going by what the, what the town's traffic study.
Okay, well, right now we're in the question phase, so if there are questions of the applicant, let's ask them.
Okay, thank you very much.
We get a chance to be heard, um, as well, but, uh, so, uh, just the follow up. Mr. Br, uh, Parker, could you summarize what you believe the amount of traffic that you?
I, I'm pretty sure Karen Sherman was in the federal courthouse with us. And the traffic study monitor was put on a telephone pole directly across the street from Herb Brockett's yard. And I, Karen's right there. I, I would ask her, was it two hundred and twenty or?
I'm, I'm asking the applicant what he has for this.
All right, tha, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Parker, what, what, could you sort of summarize what you anticipate for traffic, what you see today?
Sorry, what do I see?
The summary of your traffic, I, I just. You started to, and I, I'd like to get a sense of this once more.
The traffic is in and out of the lot, you mean?
You know, on a daily basis.
Right. Well, like I say, there are, the Tuttles generally go out every day and they have two trucks. Um, and a, like a, you know, a walk-in type of, uh, truck with their tools in it. Um, sometimes his brother is there, so there might be, generally they leave one truck in the air. So two trucks go out. And then occasionally, or maybe fifty percent of the time, the, uh, Rice Brother trucks goes out. And I'm not working much these days, so my truck is very seldom going. Also, there's three trucks that leave in the morning. And come back at night. So there's, you know, very little traffic. And then if we're all selling some chips, maybe some truck or two come in for that. But, um, I mean, like I say.
Okay.
There is not much. You, you come down and watch what's going on down there. You, you won't find a lot. Not that there isn't something, but it's not heavy at all.
Okay, thank you. Um, further questions from the audience of this applicant?
Hi, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, great.
Hi, my, Audrey Zebetra. I live in Noel Drive. Um, and I just wanted to comment on, um. The processing that goes on. I know it's only a few times a year, but. Um, I would like to attest that it's, it's extremely, extremely noisy. And I think that it was failed to mention that there is an entire other neighborhood, less than a football field away. Behind these operations going on that are impacted by this. So I just wanted to comment on that. You know, there's a lot of noise. Um, you've heard us at other meetings speaking to the extent of the noise that goes on over there. And this just kind of adds to it. Um, and it is noy, is pretty noisy and it goes on pretty much the entire day. So your entire day is pretty much a wash. You cannot go outside and, and bear it. And, um, I think Mr. Brumberg mentioned that the building inspector did take a sound measurement of that. And has validated that that exceeds the town's bylaws. So I guess I have concerns with approving that type of operation. Um, knowing that it exceeds the town bylaws and that seems like a direct conflict of interest. Um, and also complicates our building inspector's ability to enforce things. And creates dynamics that I think that Mr. Brumberg alluded to. Um, we need to be consistent. With these permits and enforcing them. Um, I was at the other meeting that Mr. Brumberg talked about. Um, regarding one ninety-four's operations and it, and indeed it was recommended that there is no permit in place for that. So they, they were instructed to vacate the property. This seems to be a similar situation in this case. There is no permit. You know, a lot of the operations going on there, other than the, the processing doesn't impact us, but I just feel like as a town, we need to be consistent. Um, to be able to hold a, a, a level of standard and treat everybody equally. Um, again, but, you know, my concern is definitely with that processing of that mulch material. It is extremely loud, extremely. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Further questions? Okay, I think we've had some of it, but, uh, anybody who wishes to be heard in support. Okay, I think we've had some of it, but anybody who wishes to be heard in support of this application?
John, just, you have two people that have raised their hand.
I'm sorry. Yeah, let me also, uh, just repeat because it's later on in the evening and there's been new people come on. That if you have joined by phone and you wish to be heard when we're doing this, star nine will raise your hand. If you're on the computer, um, you can do it, uh, heading down on the bottom of the, the screen, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and then you need to unmute yourself. And again, if you're on the phone, star six will unmute you once you've been recognized. So just want to repeat that for anybody that's joined us since the beginning. Okay, um, so I'm sorry, who's, and we have Chris?
They loaded, but it was Michaela that had raised their hand.
Oh, well, let me go back to, again, with questions so that we can keep this in some semblance of order. Are there any further questions? Now, anybody that wishes to be heard in support of this application? Is there anybody wishing to be heard in opposition to this? All right, I'm sorry.
John, there's a couple of hands that just went up, Pat Hafford, and then a phone number, five oh eight number.
Oh, you know what, they may be on, I'll get two pages here, that's probably what it is. So Mark, can you, I, I'm not seeing the hand, so if you could call on them, we'll, by name.
So the, the first one that went up is just a phone number, it's five oh eight, two four five, twenty three thirteen.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Yes, could you give your name and address?
Yes, Mark Delica, three oh five Washington Street.
Hi, Mark.
I, I've known Herb for a long time. Um, we've, I, I worked with Herb a little bit with Mr. Tadakoff on trying to, um, apply for permits. I think it was probably the two thousand twelve that Herb was talking to before. Uh, we had a series of pictures, documentation. Herb has some permits that, when he bought the lot, were transferred over to him, as he said earlier, between the, uh, Conservation Commission, who also allowed the parking of the trucks, uh, on the lot. So, so it was permitted through. Uh, when we finished with Mr. Tadakoff with everything Herb was doing, which is the similar right now, uh, eight years ago, the finding was at that point that there was no permit to issue, that everything Herb was doing was either by the original permit or by right. So until Herb either replied for a building or sold it, Mr. Tadakoff said, just go right ahead and keep going. So, so this has been looked at and addressed over the years. And I gotta say, Herb has always been an upstanding guy and tried to answer beyond, um, you know, any question that's, that's been there. He's, he's taken it to a hundred and ten percent of answering, because he does want good neighbors. He and his family have been here for generations, uh, and, and they have a great name and, uh, and they care about neighbors. So I just wanted to point that out, that, that he really does an excellent job. Um, you know, there was a time when Herb's father was, was alive, and there was a lot of things going on with people working in their homes. And it is a working town, or it was back then. Um, so there was probably about that time that Herb actually, young Herb, went and bought this property. Well, he wasn't working out of the home, and he's, and he's let a lot of other people do the same thing, live in town, but, but run their businesses at a reasonable rate, um, you know, in, in an industrial park where it was supposed to be, instead of in the backyards. So I, I just hope you, uh, you know, think kindly on what Herb has done in the past and vote favorably for issuing a permit finally, you know, to let him continue.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, apparently, yeah, Pat Hafford, do you wish to be heard? I understand your hands up.
Yes, I do. Um, we've lived here for thirty two years, and we may be the closest, uh, house to this. During that time, we had never made a complaint about the business that went on at one seventy five Lowland Street. It generates very little truck traffic, um, smell or noise. It, it is not a nuisance business like others on the street. It can be loud a few days of the year, as Audrey said. Um, but, but you know, we, we live next to an industrial park, and we expect it to be loud a few days of the, of the year, unlike six days a week like it is now. But I would say that any special permit should be restrictive enough to allow for the current usage, but prevent expanded use by either a tenant or the next owner. Um, I'm afraid good intentions just won't cut it. One thing we've learned from many, many meetings with town committees is that we need permits that are specific, limited, and enforceable. We would hate to see something that's done based on, you know, her being a good citizen, and then the next owner, I don't know, possibly someone who owns land next to him, bought the property at some point when he retires, and then we have all the problems that we have today. So I'm, I guess I'm in favor based on his desire to make it right. And the fact that it, it has not been a continual source of aggravation for us as neighbors.
Thank you very much, very insightful. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard in, I guess, we, either in support or in opposition at this point? If anybody would like to raise their hand and be recognized, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Yes. I, I want to make, make this real clear. I, I think Herb Brockett does an amazing job over there, okay? I agree with Mark Delica with what Herb Brockett has done. The things that I'm asking for is consistency. If, if I have to get permits that take me three hundred and sixty five days to get, if you screen loom, or you screen wood chips, or you park trucks, or you do any, I, I, all I ask is consistency. If you're running a piece of equipment at ninety seven decibels, it doesn't matter whether you do it for an hour or you do it for three intervals of two hours. It's against the law. If, if, it's consistency. If, if the permit is being permitted through the zoning board, is that consistent? What, what I would have to do across the street sixty five feet away? Because I would like the ability to come to the zoning board and permit exist. I love what Herb does. I think Herb's property is awesome. I want to do the same thing across the street, fifty four acres, and be consistent with Herb's permit. That's all I want to say. But I appreciate Herb, I like Herb, don't get this wrong. And, and people can throw me under the bus all they want. I permitted my property the proper way, and that's what I'm asking. And that's about it. I just, I, I just want to emphasize, they can, they can say all they want in the background. Permitting consistently is what we need. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Brummer. And just as a general comment, that, that reminded me for anyone that's on here. Um, any permit that we issue, we would try to usually restrict as, as definitively as possible. But it also does not take away any other legal requirements, whether it be the DEP, the Conservation Commission, or anyone else. So I would, um, point out that if those, for the nature of the work, are required, we, we are only addressing the zoning allowance to do that. So it's, they layer on each other, and you have to meet all other federal, state, local requirements. Um, it, it, this isn't a permit that waives any of those. It just allows them to happen within those. So that's there, and, and I appreciate your reminder of that, and also Mr. Hafford's. Caller ending in one eight oh two would like to be recognized. We know.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, it's Chris Kenny, the building inspector.
Oh, hello, Chris.
I just thought I should chime in a little bit about sort of how we are, where we are, and, and a couple of other thoughts on this, uh, property. As, as Mr. Brumber has made a couple of notes about, um, you know, how we're going through this whole process, uh, why we're with the ZBA as opposed to with the planning board. Um, my thoughts on this property with it, we have a existing use that's been there, established for thirty, forty years. Um, it's been unpermitted for that period of time. You know, based upon my evaluation, it looked like a special permit would have been required when Mr. Barker brought the property. It, it just didn't happen at the time. Um, anyway, the, the trigger for, um, the planning board becoming the, um, special permitting authority and for site plan review is, um, new and expanded outdoor storage. Um, I, I was willing to, um, treat this as an existing, uh, outdoor storage use, um, because it's been there for so long. Mr. Brockett's not proposing to change it or expand it, or it's, it's not establishing, uh, a new, uh, use on this property to, in attempts to get a, a special permit that he should have had to begin with. If he applied for a special permit when he brought the property back in, in the eighties, um, the site plan review piece of it wouldn't have been a, um, part of the, the equation at that point. Um, it, it wasn't in the bylaw, uh, as a trigger then. So, um, hopefully that sort of explains why we're here as opposed to with the planning board, um, with this application. Um, my, my other comment on this is that we kind of have two different, um, uh, we, we have two different uses happening here, the one being the outside storage, um, contractor's yard type use, which I think is kind of a, a straightforward ask. Um, it's, it's, uh, a use that would be allowed by special permit. I think we've all kind of heard the comments that, uh, Mr. Brockett's property doesn't really cause, um, you know, too much traffic or other, uh, issues within the neighborhood. It's, you know, he's, he's basically been a good neighbor. Um, so for, for that piece of it, I, I don't really see there being too much of an argument, um, as a detrimental use to the neighborhood. The, the big question that I have, and I think a lot of people brought up, is the grinding operation, um, and how to deal with that. Um, as a, as a general industrial type use, um, it could be allowed, um, in the, in the zone, um, as processing. But obviously, the noise level exceeds what the bylaw allows, and that's, that's sort of where we've, we've come into this, um, you know, what I see as a sort of big question about this. Um, and I don't really have a good answer for you. Um, even an incidental use like he has proposed a couple of times a year, um, if it exceeds the noise level, it exceeds the noise level. Um, I'm not sure if there's equipment available that can do the same job without creating such, uh, uh, an amount of noise, or if there's a way to put up a barrier or some sort of enclosure to make it so that it's less impactful on the neighbors to, you know, quiet it down essentially. Um, but that's, that's sort of my concern, um, is, is that, um, you know, if the board finds, uh, that, that this use is acceptable, then the noise factor is, is, as Mr. Brumber said, it's going to exceed what the bylaw allows. Um, uh, and that, unless we were, you know, in a position to create a variance, uh, from the bylaw for those specific events, um, which I don't believe has been applied for, um, we're kind of stuck with, with, um, you know, the, having to perform an enforcement on that. So anyway, that's my two cents as the, as the building inspector. Um, you know, the, the majority of the use on that property, the ninety nine percent of the year, I, I think it's, it's relatively benign. And it's, it's that, it's that one percent of the year when the processing is happening that we've, we've got the issue. And whether the board wants to, uh, you know, make a motion on, on the ninety nine percent and, and defer the one percent, or do something else with it. Um, maybe that's, um, you know, a, a, a direction to go in, I'm not sure here.
Okay, yeah, I, I think I can share some of your concerns on that, but I appreciate your, giving your perspective and letting us know where that is. Um, Audrey, I believe you had your hand raised again?
Yes, thank you. Um, and thank you, Chris, for explaining that. That was very helpful. And, you know, I would like to agree that, as you indicated, for the most part, I think the operations are there, are pretty benign. And we don't really notice too much in terms of the truck traffic or the noise. But it's really this grinding operation, which, you know, three days a year doesn't sound bad. But when you're already listening to ridiculous amounts of noise six days a week, that those three days can really put you over the edge. So, um, you know, I agree overall. I think that the operation over there has been, um, you know, very good neigh- neighborly intentions. I didn't know if there is the option of, you know, approving the outside storage and everything else, but excluding the processing, um, from that permit, um, just as a consideration.
Um, ye- yes, that is absolutely, uh, something that, we, we can condition the permit, um, however, is appropriate, so that, that is consideration for sure.
I'm just, um, wondering, could we do what you just suggested there maybe? And allow some time to see if there's another grinding machine that doesn't have that kind of noise? I, I'm not sure, I don't know that much about it, but give us a little time to research that and see if that's a possibility.
Okay.
Just that particular piece of it.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, and perhaps there is a way to condition it that, um, proactively prevents that rather than, you know, as, um, Mr. Hafford said, puts the building inspector in the difficult position of having to react to it. Uh, we, we can consider that. But yeah, if there's another piece of equipment or a way to baffle it, that may get there. Thank you. Um, let's see, Michaela Hafford, would you like to be recognized?
I'm on, on Lowland Street. I'd love to, um, confirm what others have said. Mr. Brockett has been a fantastic neighbor. I think that part of the reason we've got some of the difficulties we've got now is because we just assumed that others moving in would be, um, similar. And we, I, as you've heard, the residents who, who live here don't have anything against the few trucks. I mean, we see almost no trucks going in and out of there. Um, so I'm not sure where that two hundred plus came from, but there aren't two hundred a day going in and out of that business. Um, but, and I have no, nothing against the permit, except the tree business. That is brutal. And I don't know if there's anything that's going to be able to grind up, what it grinds up, and do it so that the neighbors don't hear it a few times a year. That would be my only, my only concern. But otherwise, what he's doing should be allowed, I think.
Thank you, appreciate you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this? Better, okay. Uh, any further questions or comments from the board? On that? Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Make a motion, we close the public portion of the hearing on the special permit application by Herbert Brockett Jr. at, for the location at, uh, for the property located at one seven five Lowland Street.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, John, I, Jay?
I.
Uh, Mark?
Next frozen.
Mark, are you abstaining on this, or? Oh, I think you're frozen, I'm sorry. You're just staring at it. Hi, we got it, and Liz?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Motion carries the, um, thing has been, uh, the application, the hearing has been closed. Thank you, Mr. Parker. We hopefully will, um, deliberate and, and create, uh, decision on this if we can tonight. But I'm not convinced that's going to happen, looking at what else is on the agenda and the time. But we will do it as quickly as possible, at which case you'll be notified. And, um, presuming. presuming permit is granted. Well, either way, there's a twenty day appeal period for you or anyone else and after which takes, something takes effect, presuming no appeals.
Okay, thank you very much. And then thank all of you who have supported me here.
Well, thank you very much for all the information and, and thank you to all of the townspeople that lengths that we didn't have.
Thank you.
Okay, take care. All right, next, and let me double check so I don't double clutch for a third time tonight. We have a public hearing for a special permit at the Hoops Lab at fourteen ninety Washington Street and related use variants for the Hoops Lab at fourteen ninety Washington Street. We have the proponent that like to make a presentation of any sort.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you, Robert Burr, counsel for the applicant, the Hoop Lab, and Mr. Dwayne Powell, who's joined me. And Mr. Anthony Grisafa, managing member of fourteen ninety Washington Street LLC. As you stated, we are here this evening seeking a special permit to allow a basketball club, a one-on-one type of club for basketball for youth and a related use variance there too as well. Mr. Powell has got a, a a nice business concept where he provides individual training, one-on-one to children and high school, high school children in basketball. He's the Wellesley High School basketball coach, has been there for three years and he has twenty years of experience in this business. So we believe that this would be a, a nice business for the town of Holliston. And and, and I think its impact is relatively low and works at this, at this location. The property is commercially zoned under the Town of Holliston zoning bylaws twenty nineteen under use regulations. Subsection D, commercial uses, and then sub subsection seventeen, a commercial or recreational facility such as this requires a special permit of this board. In addition, the building that this facility would be in is a butts a residential district. On the property line, it's twenty feet. At least that's how it was advertised. And that would require a variance. It, according to the bylaw, can't be closer than one hundred feet from a residential district. I would say that the home and homes located at fifty-seven Summer and forty-five Summer, although I would like to hear from the abutters if they'd like to say something. I noticed you just put up the attachments here. I also have some as well too that I can share if we need more detail. The, the homes are several hundred feet away. So while it, the building is within one hundred feet from a residential district, the actual homes that have been there for a number of years are several hundred feet away. Mr. Powell plans on having a facility, as I've said, that would be one-on-one instruction. And in some instances, three to five members. The building is a steel building. It's a brand new building, as this board I'm sure knows, because we've been before you before. It's well insulated. The bays associated with the building would, would remain closed. People entering for training would come in through a door, not through the bay. And no spectators will be visiting either. So the impact is relatively low on the, on what, what type of noise could be expected during the day. There's currently very few visitors to the site because the other tenants are contractors that come to pick up supplies that they need for what they do and then leave the site. And so we, we're seeking a special permit to allow this usage along with a use variance to allow this facility to be within a hundred feet of a residential district.
Great, thank you. I had just a couple of questions about the operation itself and maybe you can fill me in. The, the number of people typically at time, it's the instructor or instructors as well as you said, you said one-on-one or three to five. So what, what's the maximum number of people you would anticipate at any time in the facility?
Okay, this is Dwayne speaking. So the maximum would be six people at max because that's assuming that, that the max, we have five kids and one, me being the trainer, I would be considered part of the people in the building. So that would be six.
Okay. Yeah, we just, because it's likely we, we may condition, especially where the, the concern, I think, with the variances is with noise, that that would be one way to do that, but I want to make sure that accommodates your business plan if we do. Second, what's the age of the, are these high school kids typically or younger or?
So I've, I've, I've trained, I've done a lot of one-on-ones with several ages. I start from as young as eight years old to, to eighteen, nineteen. I do train some freshmen in college. But usually it's around from eight to eighteen. And it's mainly, like Bob said, it's mainly one-on-ones. It's a lot of one-on-ones. It's one-on, me and one kid, and we're just going through drills and won't be as noisy because I mean, one person dribbling the ball unless they're pounding the ball through the, the ground.
Now, I was thinking more of, what, what do you have for parking? Is it, do you have dedicated spaces or I, I think it was addressed on there. Is it be, if they're younger kids, I imagine it'd be drop-off. I'm just trying to think of when we get that kind of use in an industrial area. I want to make sure there's safety's been considered of kids and all.
Yeah, Mr. Powell, you can answer how many people you actually think will be there. And if the board wants to get further into the parking detail as it relates to the entire site, we can discuss that as well too.
Yeah, for the, for the most part, as I, I've already spoke about, it's pretty much one-on-ones, even with my younger kids. It's a drop-off situation and with, plus with, with the COVID situation careful kids, parents aren't spectating, they'll sit in their car. So I'm anticipating anywhere from two to three cars if there's four to five people in there, but usually it's one-on-ones. And even in a four to five car, uh, four to five participants, you know how it goes. Most people have somebody drive. So there's a person, another carpool, and everybody hops in the van. One mom drops them off and she might go do some shopping and she'll come get them after.
Maybe we pull up just so you said they'll be coming in another door. Trying to get the site plan for this, but maybe we could pull it up and just point out sort of the, the flow of where drop-offs would get dropped off and walk in and where people park. Would that be possible? I think we
Robert, do you want me to load what I have or do you have better pictures?
Sure, I don't know if that or if Mr. Burr, if it's easier for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to share the screen. We've got, I'm going to press that now. I know we missed for that earlier. Can you see this? This is the
Not quite yet, but usually there's a little delay.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start with the, the site plan actually. It shows the building.
You've clicked on the share screen button at the bottom?
Yeah, I believe I did.
Well, because I'm not seeing anything.
Okay.
If you want, I will share mine out.
Oh, here we go, share. There we go.
No, you gotta do it again because I do it one more time.
Apologize.
There you go.
Is that good?
No, we see your background.
Okay, and here's the site plan. So I think first I'll start on the first page where it shows, this is the building here in the back, and then we'll get into more detail. This is the home at fifty-seven Summer. So you can see the significant distance, and this is the home at forty-five Summer.
Okay.
So a little bit greater detail of existing parking, proposed warehouse, number two, number two. There's parking here. And then parking up in this area as well too. And I think
You're at the end of the line. You're not, the only traffic coming there would be traffic coming there, basically, right?
Yes.
It is no through, that's great for that use.
I think that's safe to say. And if I could, I'll pull up, and the board has seen this in the past, the parking sketch that was designed by American Engineering, Dan Merrigan. And I'll start with his quote right here, and I hope I'm not moving this around too much at this late hour. The this was done to show what the potential expansion was at the site. There are thirty-five spaces there currently. There's room for thirty-nine additional parking spaces for a total of seventy-four. So if we look at this building here, the there have been added additional parking spaces that are available, given the fact that the other two tenants are industrial requiring, based on their employees, only eleven parking spots. And based on reduced occupancy of this building to one occupant per a hundred square feet, which is twenty. So we'll say twenty will be in this two thousand square feet for this basketball program, which is way more than what Mr. Powell ever proposes. That at three parking spots per participant. I'm sorry, one parking spot per three participants. And again, that considers the fact that there'd probably be spectators. If I divide twenty by three, I come to six point six or round it up to seven. If we add seven plus eleven, that's eighteen spaces and there's thirty-five on the spot on the lot currently. So I do believe that there's more than adequate parking at the location. I think our biggest concern or the biggest emphasis that we want to place on the board here this evening is number one, this isn't a basketball facility like a YMCA that's going to have people coming at any hours, like a, like a, or like a gym. It's one-on-one and on occasion, as Mr. Powell says, could swell to three to five children plus himself. Meaning six, no spectators. The bay doors will remain closed at all times. They'll only enter in through the door and the building's a new building, steel building that's well insulated. So we believe the impact, other than the neighbors seeing cars coming in, they shouldn't be able to hear, hear the program. Nothing's contemplated outdoors at all.
Okay, terrific. You, you did mention the hours. What would be the proposed hours of operation?
Well, the proposed hours is the applicant state, as I stated earlier, Mr. Powell is the Wellesley High School basketball coach. So he proposes Monday through Friday, three P M. to eight thirty P M. And again, that's a large gap of time perhaps, but it's because he just wants flexibility on a one-on-one. That doesn't mean that it's going to be used, you know, consistently on those entire time periods, but it's kind of hard to wrap your head around that. And then Saturday and Sunday. I'm sorry.
Would you like weekend hours as well or?
Yep. And then the weekend hours in the application are nine A M. to eight P M.
I'm sorry, I didn't recall it. Okay.
Yeah, nine A M. to eight P M. One thing that was not included in the application, but in a conversation I had with Mr. Powell today, he would like flexibility to be nine to eight thirty Monday through Friday during school vacation times.
Okay. I'm not hearing anything that doesn't allow that anytime. But thank you, let's, we'll do that. The, the other question, and again, this is not really our fight, but there was questions from the health agent regarding the septic capability of the thing and whether showers are going to be used. And I, I think it probably anticipated a larger thing, but are, are you comfortable that? Because again, you will have to meet all of the requirements of the Board of Health and, and whatnot. Any concerns about that?
A, as you state, the Board of Health has opined as is normal with, with these types of applications that go to all interest groups and all boards. I've, Mr. Merrick, Mr. Merrick has responded, and I believe I'm satisfied that the septic system will work at this facility. And as far as the use, the owner and the engineers and the architect have been in touch with Mr. Kenny concerning what's going to be required. And I believe we'll be able to satisfy that as well too. But as you correctly point out, no occupancy can occur without those permits. So that septic system is going to have to work as is the use requirements.
Yeah, I, I don't want to try to become the health expert or, or assessor, but I do want to make sure that you've considered and you don't get down this road without knowing that that will have to happen. Okay.
I appreciate that.
You've, yeah, I've, I've run out of other questions from the board. I've yapped enough.
I have, I have a couple of questions. There's just one basketball court in there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not, it's actually a half court, so it's not even a full court.
Does, does the business exist elsewhere or is, or just starting here?
The business, so the business does not exist elsewhere. It's starting here. Me and my partner, Dr. Wig, he's on this line as well. We decided, I've been working at Ford Gym for a, a number of years, and we decided like this is something that he's pushed me many times to try to take on something like this, like the facility and take advantage of like what I'm able to do instead of working for a company. Why not work for yourself? And this opportunity with this bay came upon me and I was like, yes, this is definitely the place we need to be. Plus, side note, sorry, I know this goes on YouTube. I got married in Holliston at the Historical Society. It's a pretty awesome place.
He, he actually, he actually has a pretty good story with Dr. Wig, who's a partner of his, did a GoFundMe page that was very successful in raising money for this as well too. Now, the hour's late, but it's a good story.
Go ahead, Dr. Wig, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I, I know it's late, so I'll just be very brief. So I'm a my role is I'm, I'm chief medical officer at, at Cigna. I had the pharmacy side of the business. I met Dwayne when my daughter was, we moved to Wellesley. And the thing that struck me about him is that, you know, he's a very kind, caring person, kind of goes out of his way and had an emphasis on girl sports. And so that was very interesting. A bunch, I went to business school at Sloan and, and MIT, and, and a bunch of us were really thinking about something in social entrepreneurship. And so we thought it'd be a great opportunity to, to kind of support him and, you know, kind of his dream. And, and that was sort of how we put this together. So I, I, I personally put in twenty thousand into his operation. A bunch of us are giving him some free business advice and, you know, trying to help him to sort of navigate operational efficiency and, and all of these things that you guys are talking about today. So appreciate the chance to talk.
Thank you. More questions from the board?
Couldn't it be the kind, kind of thing that like a, like a basketball team would want to go there? Are you saying it wouldn't ever be that? It just seems that, you know, club teams or high school teams wouldn't want to come and get some expertise. You're saying it would really just be limited to four kids at the most?
No, we're saying five. We're saying five kids at the most. Yeah. And, and I, we understand that gym space is gonna be at a premium in these conditions. A lot of places aren't renting spaces. It's out, but for the most part, we won't have the for the most part, we won't have the amount of time, or we're not interested. I've already had people reach out to me through different sources of social media, inquiring about different things. And I strictly told them, this is a small group training, one-on-one private lesson. So, yeah, they can be interested, but probably not gonna happen at all.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, if we look at the, um, the proposed buildout inside, it, it's, it's two half courts, isn't it, Mr. Powell? It's not, and they're not-
It's actually one half court, but it's, uh, uh, it's bigger enough space where you can put another basket, but you're not renting it out to a team, because it wouldn't make sense. I mean, I've been in this basketball space for twenty years, you're not renting a team a half court, they wouldn't-
But that, that's kind of my point. My point is, is the board doesn't need to be concerned that at some future date that this would be rented out for a basketball game, for example.
Okay, well, I think we also could deal with that by, uh, putting conditions on the number of occupants type thing, which, uh, it's not a real issue. And then the, what you're showing now, that what's on the left side is, is another space within that same building that someone else would potentially rent for another purpose.
This is being rented out by Apex Insulation, which has already been approved.
Oh, okay, great, I didn't realize.
This section here is not being rented out.
Great, thank you. Um, further questions from the board? Jay Mark? All right, is there anyone in the audience that has questions of the applicant? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard in support of the applicant?
You have a caller ended in two-six-nine-seven that has a comment.
Okay, I'm, uh, we have a caller that ends in two-six-nine-seven. Um, the floor is yours, you'll need to hit star six to unmute.
They're all set, they're unmuted, they can talk.
Um, my name is Michael Curly, fourteen sixty-seven Washington Street. Um, they, everything sounds fairly straightforward, but like the garage door bays, how can we ensure that those garage door bays won't be opened? If it's a hot summer day, a little humid out, get some air circulating in there. Um, what, is there anything that we can do to give assurances that those garage door bays will remain closed?
We could put a condition on it, that would be one way, which means that, that, that's um, the law of their permit.
Yep, and then also, I, I did have a question in regards to their, um, perspective hours of operation. Um, the hours of operation would take the, uh, business operating into the quiet hours of Holliston. Um, and since they're seeking relief with a use variance, I feel as the board should take exceptional care to protect the surrounding zones. I realize there's only three or four houses around them, but, um, you know, the quiet hours really, uh, with the increase of traffic and congestion and outdoor noise and drop-offs and stuff. Um, you know, if the time does go to eight thirty at night, there's gonna be a lot of pickups and drop-offs that would be concerning there.
Hmm, okay, good point, thank you.
We do plan on installing air conditioning, um, at this facility, and we would not have a problem with the condition that the bay doors remain closed.
Thank you.
It'd really be counterproductive, uh, you can't have the door open and then have a basketball court. Uh, although I guess it could be done, but, um, we would be happy with that condition.
And I, I just have one further thing, um, on it. Uh, I'd like to note that, uh, this has nothing to do with the current applicant, but it has to do with the property itself. Uh, there's been multiple and ongoing complaints to the town, specifically the building department, for multiple violations by the current tenants of that property, um, of the town bylaws. And with the town unable, as of yet, to bring the current tenants into compliance, and no indication that the owner of the property has any intention of bringing the current tenants into compliance, I would respectfully request, in light of the ongoing issues in compliance, that the town deny this use variance for this parcel, uh, so we don't just magnify the problems before we can fix the ones that are already there.
Okay, thank you. I think we had, uh, I saw one labeled Sophia, did you raise your hand and wish to speak? I think physically raised your hand, I, I don't know if you want to be recognized.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard, uh, while we've gone through questioning? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard, either in support or objection to this? Um, other than what we've heard already?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, uh, this is Sue Franco and Dave Franco, we're at forty-five Summer Street.
Thank you, yep.
Um, so we, we think what we've heard tonight sounds fine. Um, it, it's that building at the, the very corner, right near the trail, right? That's the existing building. Um, and to tell the truth, this seems like one of the, the lesser offensive things compared to the other things that are going on, on that property. Um, you know, the, on the large space, so, you know, we do, um, we can see, like, out our back doors, we can see cars pulling in and out of the, the lots there, and there's sometimes, um, some, some noise later than the hours that we, we think are supposed to be happening. Um, we've never submitted a complaint or anything, but to tell the truth, this seems much better than some of the other things that are allowed. And that might be what the, the caller was alluding to, but I guess we just want to say we're, we're in support of what he's asking for, um, as, but it's, it's good that, um, that the, um, the hours would be respected, just that it's not, you know, tons of cars going in and out, and, you know, lights kind of shining in our back windows, really.
Gotcha, um, I, I would say, I mean, I don't know what the issues are with the other tenants, and it's not really something we have, but if, if they are, you believe violating their, um, terms of any, uh, rights that they have, please do. And it sounds like people have, but I, I think the more you notify the building inspector as the enforcement agent or the selectman, uh, gives them a little more ammunition to pursue any problems that need addressing. So, you know, you're right as a citizen and, and as a, a butter and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I, I would hate to see this one declined because of the other, the behaviors that are already there. I, I don't know, just doesn't seem really fair to this person, but, um, yeah, so it's mainly just the pat the over, uh, over the hours, I think, right?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not aware-
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify? I, I don't believe that any of the buildings on this parcel are occupied.
There, there's people driving in and out of those, um, all, all day, pretty much.
Eleven days a week.
Yeah, um, the, and we've come before, we've come here to these meetings before to approve. There was like a, a car detailing, a car detailing place.
No, yeah, I couldn't imagine they'd be in yet, but, um, but yeah, somebody, okay, well.
Oh, yeah, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of action over there.
Okay, well, I, I, I would recommend people make use of your town officials to, um, to do it.
Are, are you saying there's not, they're not supposed to be occupied yet? None of the?
That's what I'm saying, yes. The building inspector told me this morning that none of the, none of the buildings have occupancy permits.
Huh, okay.
I, I just, it, Ms., Ms. Chairman, I'm not aware of any violations, but certainly we've had a good relationship with Mr. Canny, I believe. Um, if there's any corrections that need to be done, um, we'll, we'll address them.
Thank you.
Without specificity, it's hard to-
Right, that, that's why I'm encouraging people to contact Chris and let him know if there's problems, because that's the only way we're gonna get to it. So, um, yeah, please, do, um-
Mr. Chairman, can I just add that, uh, I believe the buildings next door to these buildings are the ones that are the subject of the pending enforcement actions.
Okay, so it's the next lot over?
Yeah.
Now, we have heard that, but that, and I, I thought that that was kind of where this conversation was going.
Okay.
I, I will say that the, the arbivides have been installed. Um, I know that that was, uh, a conversation in one of the previous meetings, and also, my understanding is the fence has been installed in the back, uh, abutting the trail. Just, uh, two conditions the planning board had placed on the site.
Great, thank you. Um, we have a caller whose number ends in two-six-nine-seven that has a comment. If you could identify, you have to do star six to unmute yourself.
Um, I just had a question on the zoning hardship claim that the petitioners are asking about.
Could you notify your, I mean, give us your name and address?
Yeah, Michael Curly, fourteen six seven Washington Street.
Thank you.
Um, in my past experiences with, with zoning, you would petition for a hardship claim if there was no other parcels in town that could accommodate your use. But, um, there are multiple properties in town that would present an approved use with a special permit without the need for a use variance on it. So, um, I was just kind of questioning the, 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 the needing, the needing to get into this one particular place and having to change the, you know, get a special use variance when there are other places in town that could suit this use.
It is from a procedural standpoint, the, the applicant is required, I mean, to meet the, um, burden of defining a hardship that I'm not sure is necessarily defined as being the only option in town, but, um,
Well, I read through the paperwork, and I didn't, I didn't see anything in it that would indicate what the hardship would be that would facilitate the need to go into this one location.
Okay, um, I will direct that to the applicant, too.
Uh, yes, uh, that, that's a fair question. There's, and, and I, I agree when we talk in terms of variance, with the issue of hardship does need to be addressed. First, as I stated earlier, this is a, um, good business, uh, opportunity for Mr. Powell. The simple hardship is that the business can't locate at this location without relief. That's the weakest argument, so I'll start there. Secondly, there's degrees of variances. This is not an applicant that is trying to, uh, put a, a two-family home in a single-family district. This is, um, asking for relief from, in a, a budding residential district where the two homes are more than a hundred feet away, although I'm not taking anything away from the comments of the residents. And then, third, I could make a legal argument, I didn't do it in writing, I'm happy to supplement it, but I think I can do it here in short order, uh, as part of the public record. In the zoning bylaws under chapter, under this subsection D, subsection seventeen, it talks in terms of the application, and I, I spoke with Mr. Canny about this, where we're trying to classify exactly what this, um, what this business is. And we arrived at the commercial indoor/outdoor amusement or recreation place or place of assembly. Particularly place of assembly. But recreation isn't defined in the two thousand nineteen zoning bylaws in Holliston. Um, and I look at subsection eighteen immediately under it, country tennis, golf, or similar clubs. So that's country club, tennis club, golf club, or similar clubs. This could be a basketball club. Clubs is also not defined in the definitions in the Holliston, um, zoning bylaws. And so if this were to be classified as a club, we could seek relief just for a special permit without the use for a variance under subsection eighteen. But we've gone this route because, um, it felt as though the relief with regard to the, um, closeness to a residential district was not of a particular hardship, given that it's one-on-one training with a maximum of to three to five children. So, that would be the, so I guess the hardship, um, members of the board, I would say, is the way that bylaws are listed, there is no actual location for this commercial use. Could be outdoor assembly, recreation, but it could also be a club where there isn't the preclusion of a hundred feet distance from a residential district.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Or, um, anybody wishing to be heard, either in support or opposition to this? I see, uh, caller twenty-six ninety-seven, do you have another comment? No, okay, um. I think, uh, board members, do you have any further questions or, uh, information need from the applicant?
None for me.
All right, then, we would entertain a motion to close this hearing, both of these.
Right, so, uh, I'll make a consolidated motion that we close the public portions of the request for a special permit and a use variance for, the applicant for the property located at one hundred, uh, sorry, one thousand four hundred and ninety Washington Street, Holliston, Mass.
I'll second it.
Okay, move ten seconds, it left me hanging there. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go roll call, vote, tell those in favor of closing the, um, hearing, signify by saying hi, John, hi, Jay.
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Liz?
Hi.
Thank you very much, um, so appreciate all the information, I appreciate the, um, neighbors that have, um, further added to the body of information. We will take this under deliberation, and again, we will do our best to get to it. I can't promise it will be tonight, but, um, we will do it in very due course, and you'll be notified immediately when we did it, and, uh, really wish you luck with this business venture. I, I like the idea, hi.
Thank you, thank you, hey, listen, we don't discriminate, we can get you in there too, Chairman.
You've never seen me play basketball.
This is, this is what I do, this is what I do.
I could play pretty good defense.
There's two sides of the court, we need you out there.
Yeah, and I'm five nine, so. So anyhow, thank you, I appreciate all everybody's time and, um, the information that you've shared with us.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Okay, let's see. We will have to find, oh. Scroll down, I gotta get back to my agenda. We've got, I believe. One more, that's what I thought it was, okay. Public hearing at being significantly past the hour of seven fifty P M., we can open a special hearing for the SOCO partnership doing businesses Verizon Wireless at seven twenty-five Washington Street. And I want somebody to speak for the proponent.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Carl Guerin, can you all hear me, okay?
We can, Mr. Guerin, thank you.
So I am joined this evening by Keith Valente, R F engineer, Don Hayes, certified health physicist, and Greg Richard, uh, representing Verizon Wireless's real estate department. And I introduce those folks because they were instrumental in putting together this, it was a team effort to put together this app-like, application package that you have in front of you. And I will lead the presentation and hopefully answer all of your questions. However, if you want to get in depth or something beyond my ability, I'm gonna defer to one of my colleagues, but hopefully we don't need to go that way. you want to get in depth or something beyond my ability, I'm going to defer to one of my colleagues, but hopefully we don't need to go that way. I know it's late. I'm going to try to be very quick. This is a very simple application. What I'd like to do is I found it's helpful if I run through very briefly the contents of the application. By doing so, I found I often answer some of your questions in advance. So the second page of my cover sheet, and I hopefully you have, you have cop the copies in front of you there. The second page of the cover sheet is the, or the stuff of it is the um table of contents of the ten tabs. And under the first tab is this so-called town form. We're asking for a special permit. It's uh interesting to point out that if we were able to hide our equipment inside this building, we wouldn't be here tonight taking your time. This would be by right. And there's in fact an installation already in the same building hosted, run by T-Mobile, one of our competitors, that just simply went and got a building permit. They didn't need to come zoning because everything is inside and we would love to have done the same thing. Our antennas are hidden and that portion of it is completely hidden and by right. It's the equipment only that kicked us into zoning. And I had some discussion with our team about trying to do some sort of a bifurcated application where we get a building permit for the antennas and then we come to you for the equipment, but it really didn't make sense because one can't work without the other. They're both necessary. So the only instrument that we're, the only element of our application that we're really here for really is the outdoor equipment in the back there. The other, the rest of it is is by right and is hidden. But under tab two is where I explain all that. That's the so so-called statement and support where I've gone through all the various elements of the bylaw. Section five O, which covers antennas as well as special permit criteria. And I've gone through line by line. As you, if you read that, you can see a lot of it's not applicable in the sense we're not proposing a cell tower. It's a simple building installation. Um, it's also an unmanned, unoccupied, remotely monitored wireless telephone utility installation. So as such, there's a lot of a special permit criteria with traffic and pedestrian flow and safety and so forth. They're really not applicable. I like to call this more of a non-use in the sense that once we get permitted and built and constructed and on air, really nothing occurs on site. Occasionally someone will show up to check on the situation, but other than that, the uh, this facility just operates peacefully with no nuisance to bother to any neighbors. Under tab three is our letter of authorization from our landlord. We have a leasehold interest in a portion of the subject property. The antenna is up in the steeple and the equipment out back. Under tab four are the field card tax map. Indeed, I like to include those in all my applications of matter, of course, to, so you can familiarize yourself with this subject property. Now, if we were doing this old-fashioned way in person at Town Hall, this is the building right next door. So I'm sure you're all familiar where where this is located. Under tab five are the FCC licenses of Verizon. I included those just for the record to show that we are an FCC licensee. As such, we are afforded certain protections under federal law under the telecommunications act. But also you can see we have seven licenses there. We're like multiple carriers all in one. There's a lot going on here. And um, and this is a very important site for us. We have problems with coverage in the area. You may wonder why do we need this? If you have a Verizon customer and you made a call in that area this afternoon, I'm going to get to that when I get to the RF plus. But this is this is an important site. We're trying to fill some problems with coverage and capacity issues that we have in Holliston in this vicinity. And this is perfect for us because it obviates the need to build a cell tower. There's already a tall structure there that we can accommodate, can accommodate our antennas. It's just a matter of putting the equipment out back and connecting the two and turning it on. Under tab six is the reporter, Mr. Valente, the so-called RF report. And in there, under page uh, page six, he goes through all the surrounding sites they were connected to now. The the ones called Holliston, Holliston two, Holliston um eight, and and then down below Sherburne and Holliston four is the subject property, of course, are the ones that show up on these RF plots. And if I could share that, if you allow me to share the screen, I'm going to put those up. Could I have permission to do that, please?
You're all set. Just click the green share button.
Okay, so if I go to this and tell me when that appears, tell me when you can see that. Yep, I know that you've done other wireless installations before, so you're familiar with these plots. This is the so-called before picture where here is our subject property. And we've got these other surrounding sites and the the blobs are, you know, the the yellow and green blobs indicate satisfactory coverage. The white is not necessarily an area where there's nothing, but it's where it's problematic and less reliable. And then the next slide here, next attachment B shows what would happen by filling in. Now, what I think is interesting and what I really appreciate what is what Mr. Valenti does is with this plot here shows where we're getting coverage from now, because you may, you may be a Verizon Wireless customer and you say, well, I made a call down there already. What's going on? So the the, what's happening? There's a phenomenon with RF where in our industry where there's a finite amount of power that's given off, we're controlled by the FCC and what frequencies we can broadcast out and what power we can give off. And we're a radio station, but we're two-way radio. We broadcast out, we have to hear back from you, the user with your little handheld device in your, in your phone. And the uh, more folks that get online, the less power there is to share among everyone else. So the footprint actually shrinks down. And so what's happening now, the reason that's it's motivated Verizon to look for a new site in the area is coverage that's servicing that area right now is coming in from this Holliston s- south site. It's it's shown in red down here. And this uh Holliston site up here is sort of in the orange coming down. And then this blue over here, Holliston two. And so these are all sites that are giving off signal that if there's nothing to block and there's no one closer to those sites than you are, you'll get a signal coming into this vicinity, but those, it's taking away and taxing those surrounding sites. And it's not an efficient way to run a network and we really need to fill the hole in the middle here. So by adding this new site, we result, this results with this, see this big green blob? This is, we'd be the coverage given off of by the church steeple. And these surrounding sites can then relax and do the thing and and service the areas they were intended to. So basically, what's happening, and this is going on nationwide, not just the Holliston, but this is happening all over the place where the more users that get on the line, the more data that's being used, the more bandwidth that's being used, it shrinks those footprints down, opens up gaps and coverage problems and capacity problems. And now we have to fill in with a new site. So this is going on everywhere out, everywhere across the country. It's called the densification of the network. So we are fortunate that there's this church with this steeple. We don't have to be that tall. You know, a lot of these surrounding sites, if you go back to Mr. Valenti's uh report, it shows the average height of all these surrounding sites is a hundred and forty-eight feet. We're only at um sixty-six here because that's all we need. We're, we have a very specific problem here we're trying to cover. And that's why we need this site. And that's why um it's not that there's zero coverage there right now, but it's a problem and the network is struggling because all these surrounding sites are trying to take up the slack. So this will solve that problem. Under number, uh, tab eleven, uh, tab seven is the report of Mr. Hayes. Now, as the board is aware, under federal law or the telecommunications act, the discussions, the environmental discussions, the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions is sort of off limits. It's not supposed to get into these health discussions and so forth. To the to the extent that we comply with FCC guidelines and it's fair, a fair question for the town to ask or prove that we're compliant. So we commissioned Mr. Hayes as an outside consultant, not a Verizon employee, but someone independent to analyze the situation with the question, are we compliant issue now? But I always like to put these in our, my applications as a matter of courtesy to the town, to the board members, to members of the public. Because it's human nature, if if you say, well, we're not allowed to get into that, it's under FCC guidelines, that sort of sets some folks wrong, you know, well, what what are they hiding and so forth? So without waiving our rights under federal law and not trying to get into a big health discussion, we commissioned this report as courtesy to the public and to the town to prove that not only are we compliant, but it's a really low power and non-issue. So Mr. Hayes's report includes on the very first page that in, I'm going to quote now from Mr. Hayes, in my expert opinion, this facility would comply with all regulatory guidelines for RF exposure. Now, he considered not only the installation of Verizon on there, but also T-Mobile's already in there. So there's already a co- a carrier operating. Now we're adding another one. Well, what does that do to the overall situation? And it's still compliant. And you could see on his, his report on page nine, he has that graph where it shows the uh highest level, it's sort of, it it blur, jumps up and then just dramatically carries off as you get farther away. But the highest it shows there is six point two percent, so under seven percent. So that says at under seven percent, you could have fifteen more of these installations in the steeple and still be compliant. And that is a completely unrealistic number because there aren't fifteen more licensees in this market. There's only a couple. So this is such a low power, such a, and and the other thing I want to point out in Mr. Hayes's report is he makes worst-case scenario assumptions because this is a, uh, to try to determine, are we compliant under the worst-case scenario, assuming that op, the facility is operating at a hundred percent all the time. Well, it never does, but in his report, he's assuming that, that there's nothing out in the, in the environment that would interfere with the signal and it's an open, wide-open plane. Well, that's not true either, but that's an assumption. So based on all these worst carrier, worst-case scenario assumptions, we're still at less than seven percent. What we have found in instances in the past where we have been asked to go after the fact, after we've been constructed and on air, asked to go on back to, go back and check and verify in real time when we're on air, what is it broadcasting at? We found it's typically way lower than what Mr. Hayes calculates under his worst-case scenario assumptions, because now it's the real, it's it's reality, it's the way the network's actually operating. So what I'm suggesting is this less than seven percent number, when we're actually on air, will probably be even lower. But notwithstanding all that, we're compliant. It's a non-issue. So we, we included that for the, for the purposes of of hopefully um satisfying anyone who's concerned about that. Under tab eight is the report of the NEPA and SHIPO consultant. Now, where Verizon is a wireless carrier, an FCC licensee, we're afforded certain protections under federal law, but we also have certain additional burdens and certain additional hoops we have to jump through. One is we have to do a full NEPA study and 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 SHIPO analysis of our installation to see if there's any problems along those lines. So so this other outside consulting firm, EBI Consulting, has already done all that and and there's no issues. And I included this specifically because the ship of the state historic preservation office, they always, you know, take note of installations on churches and so forth to make sure we're not messing with the historic integrity and so forth. And they stamp, now they, you see in that letter, they don't take the time to actually write a letter back, but they 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 stamp that the letter that our consultant said, that basically they've reviewed the project and determined it will have no adverse effect on his, a significant historical or archaeological properties. The reason I included that is because when I was first given this assignment and I was looking at the plans, I thought, okay, our equipment's out back, the antennas are up in the steeple, but we have to connect the two with this coax cable as and it's running along the back of the building, then it's going up the the side of the building, then it's going across a roof, then it's going up the back side and then into the attic, and then it's disappearing. And I thought, I don't know, that that could look kind of sloppy. It may not look so good, you know, and I wonder if SHIPO is going to have a problem with that. Then when I went out and visited the site, I saw that, no, it's not an issue, but it's not a problem. And if you're familiar with the site, as you know, there's a large topographical increase at the back. So this site's basically pushed up to this retaining wall at the back and then the land rises up to the rear. And all of that coax cable run that I described is all happening at the rear of the building where it's not going to be visible from the pu, from the front. It's not going to affect the is, the integrity, it is the aesthetics of the building. And that's what SHIPO also concluded. And that's why I included that uh, letter to show that that also is a non-issue as far as the aesthetics of making the connection between the equipment and the antennas. And then under the next tab are the photo simulations, which usually on something like this, I only ask for one, just to show what 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 can you see? And it's going to be the equipment up back. We showed the church itself to show that the antennas are going to be hidden inside. And so T-Mobile's already in there and you probably can't tell they're there. We're going to do the same thing. They've come a long way with this so-called stealth material where they remove wood panels, put the antennas behind and then replace the wood with a composite material that's allows the RF signal to transfer through unimpeded. But it's painted up and and dressed up and to match, and you would never know the difference when you're standing down on the ground looking up at it. So the steeple and the appearance of the church will not change. The only thing that would be visible is if you're on site and you go back to that back area, that's where the equipment would be. And then I want to share the screen again to get to these plans. And then under tab ten, everyone's got in the back this uh half-size fold-out set of plans. And there's not a lot to those. I mean, it it looks more complicated than it is, but if I can go back to this now and um let me see here, go to these plans and now did you, am I sharing that? Oh, what's going on here?
Not yet.
Yeah. Share the plans. Okay, tell me when those pop up.
Yep, here they are.
Now, this is the sheet Z two, which I thought is the most informative as far as showing you what we're doing. Can you all see this okay?
Yes.
And so here's, this church property is this weird irregular shape. And over on the the left side over here is the the play area and so forth. Here's the church building. It's over on the right here on the side of Town Hall on the side that um on um Jasper Hill Road, which my understanding is a private way that goes between Town Hall and the subject property. Over here, there's already an area back here that's fenced off, and that's where we are proposing to place our equipment. And one correction or one element of the plans that we're not going to do that's shown here now is there's a shed here that we've we showed that we're going to relocate up to the front. We're not doing that anymore. We're going to remove that shed to make room for ourselves, but the church has found some other way to accommodate the storage of whether whatever's in there. And they've asked us, or they've told us, we don't need to replace it. Originally, we were going to replace it with another shed over here. We don't need to do that now. So that's off the, off the plans now or or taken off the table. But the equipment is back here. And so it's a a thirteen-by-twenty-five-foot leased area, and then inside there, we're fencing at twelve by twenty-four. There's a four-by-eight concrete pad with outdoor equipment. It's a six-foot-high solid fence. And so basically, it's already tucked away. This area is already cordoned, cordoned off and sectioned off. And so not a whole lot is going to change in that regard either. We're sticking our equipment back there. We meet all setbacks without variance. The building inspectors reviewed this and said, all we need is a special permit under section five zero five O and um, and that's where the equipment's going. So it's very basic um a, a very basic petition. As I said, if we could figure out a way to put the equipment inside, we wouldn't even be here tonight. We would have applied for a building permit. It's just that equipment outside that has triggered us into zoning. And there's already another carrier in there, and we hope to be able to join them. Um, we respectfully ask for your approval so that we can do so. And with that, I'll close and ask if there are any questions.
Yeah, I have one question. I think I understood and thank you for the complete and um informative look at that. The, I I didn't actually, you know, have a chance to see the actual plans that you just showed us. What what is the equipment that is going in that enclosure?
It's an outdoor radio equipment cabinet and on a pad. And then there are other boxes that are there that are the telephone demarcation box, the um, uh, uh, equipment, electrical demarcation box and so forth. So it's just the radio equipment. And basically, you think of it as a um, you know, everybody, everyone's got all these wireless devices for, it's for streaming music and everything. But back in the old day, you had a a stereo receiver and then wires that went to a speaker somewhere. This is like the receiver. This is the equipment. And that gives off no RF energy. All the energy is coming out of the antennas up in the steeple. This is like the uh, the stereo receiver down on the ground and it's connected to the antennas with that coax cable. So it's just the radio equipment cabinets and some battery backup that are out there.
Oh, there is no generator then?
No.
Thanks.
Why, why didn't T-Mobile need that? If they're in.
They're inside. They're, they're, they have the same thing we do somewhere in the building and they got there first and they took the last available space, I guess.
Canada doesn't have a closet anymore.
Yeah. Uh, and 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 I, how big, how big is the space that this equipment is going to take up?
Well, we leased it, we're fencing off a twelve-by-twenty-four area, which is a lot more than we need now, but I think they're doing that for maybe future expansion or I don't, I don't know exactly that, but we don't. The cu, the concrete pad is four by eight, which our equipment's on that. And then separated from that is where the electrical and telephone demarcation lines are coming in and so forth. So it's it's, they like an area that they can move around in there and not bother anyone and then for future expansion and so forth. But it's all contained behind the fences there now. We're just going to remove that fence and put a solid fence up six foot in height and 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 hide out back there, basically.
So what type of fence would it be?
It's a, a solid um PVC fence, I believe they're calling it. Look at my plans. I've got like, these are for me to look at by big plans. They look fashionably. Yeah, vinyl, um, vinyl fence, vinyl, solid vinyl fence, privacy fence. So you, so you won't be able to see, see through to it.
Mark J, any questions?
None, none, none for me.
Is there anybody in the audience that has questions of the applicant about this? This application? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard either in support or opposition to this application? I'm hearing none. I'll give the board one more chance to see if there's anything more you need, but I'm, I've got the information I need. All right. If that's the case, we will look for a, a motion to close this hearing.
So I'll make a motion that we close the public portion of the special permit application by the applicant for the property located at seven hundred and twenty-five Washington Street, Halls in Mass.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? None will move to a voice vote. John, I, Jay.
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Liz?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you. We've closed it. I think it, I appreciate the very thorough and, and straightforward application. And I think, as you said, we've done a few of these. I will say this one was quicker than the last tower project that we, we dealt with. Nice to see you again, Mr. Hayes. We, we, we had that. So thank you very much. And we'll take a look at this. And as I, you understand how long you've been on the line, we did a bunch today. I'm not sure that we're going to get everything finished up tonight, but we will as quickly as possible get to our deliberation and decisions and file with town clerk and be notified immediately. So hopefully in the, bring your future.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So is your, to your, your protocol typically, then you would deliberate at the following, the next month's meeting?
We frequently try to deliberate if we can that night, given the fact that we had as many hearings as we did tonight and the hour, I'm not promising anybody anything. I have to consult with my colleagues on what their stamina is, but um, we, we will get it either. We'll, I don't know. We'll see what I saw on our next agenda, whether we have time. It's actually, we have a meeting on the forty B next week, so we may have some time. And maybe that's what suggests that we try then if that doesn't work, we'll schedule probably an interim meeting to, to do it. So it'll be between now and our next month's meeting at the latest, I would think.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate all your help with it.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. So my, my colleagues, what is your feeling on our deliberations tonight? Do you want to take a crack at some of these or?
We probably should considering, I don't want to have to manage through one, two, three, four, five, plus multiple relief applications.
Yeah, let's pick off the couple of easy ones. I'm going to try video again. I,
Okay.
All right. See if that works.
We can see.
I had to shut video off because I couldn't, I couldn't hear anybody. I kept freezing up.
Looking good, Mark. Yeah. Okay. Well, so why don't we, yeah, go and, and I think given what we, there's, when anybody's ready, just submit a motion to adjourn and we'll figure out what can, and I think probably we have next week, the next version of the forty B. So we can, if we have time then do it or figure out when to finish this. If, if we don't have the time then, I'm not sure how long we'll take, but since we've got it. So what do we got? Let me go back up to the, the top.
Do one hundred and twenty Golding Street variance. Mentioned.
I was going to ask Mr. Hayes there to give us a little primer on, on the RF stuff, but then I remembered some of it. So I figured I didn't need a refresher.
Maybe we should stop and call him back.
Don't, don't ask.
He started last time.
Pardon me?
So I think it was about the time he started the presentation last time, right?
Yeah. Okay. So we, we continued seven ninety-nine Golding Street. Start with that.
Yeah.
That was loud.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was a little, that was the one we, they came in and it, for some reason I thought that was right on the street, but I guess I, I didn't remember it completely. But um, yeah, we did hear that one.
You and I. We had one before though, that was a similar that Mark, I remember liked the property. It was like a really nice old farm property.
That was on Fisk.
Yeah. That's the one you're thinking of, I think.
I think maybe, yes.
No, but this, this, this one was also the improvement was so the daughter could live on the property and take care of the, the elderly parents.
Yeah.
Well, that was definitely pre me. This one is, is, I mean, that's kind of a dense area in general, as long as I knew that two lots were going to be created in the last, I mean, I think the problem is, is that to have three physical structures on that one single building lot is kind of bananas in that I imagine anybody that buys the big house is probably not going to want the too small properties on there. So it doesn't make a ton of sense. Plus the nearest property to the road that, that I think they, they were calling it Golding Place is already fairly dense. So you're adding another unit that's already there off of an already densely used road. And then you're leaving this, you know, acreage with this big house in the back that I, I would imagine would sell independent of the other one anyway. I just don't want to like, I don't want to get in the way of the, of the intent of the prior relief. But if I were looking at it on its face today, I would have been like, hmm, that makes sense to split that off. It's too bad you couldn't do it administratively, but you can't have more than two buildings on a building lot.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fairly certain that the, you know, the mechanism was to just control that that was what they asked for, to let somebody else come in and do it, and that it didn't get turned into something down here. I, I guess I would agree with you that it seems like a, the right kind of lot to split and do, but flip side, it, it is a self-created hardship in that they already did it once and didn't think about this. So I think it'd be one of those where we'd be having to use a liberal interpretation again.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it. I, if we can put a restriction on the, on that larger piece, provided that's, that's what the owner wants to do. It sounded as if it was pretty wet anyway. So can't put a subdivision in.
Yeah. I mean, I guess you could say that the hardship is that due to the shape and definition of the existing lot and the location of the existing structures, you cannot relocate the buildings in order to do this, but I'm not sure if it would, you know, how well it would stand up to. A closer, it clearly doesn't have any adverse effect on the neighborhood because you're physically changing nothing. It's just an ownership change. And it's well within all the other bylaw and zoning requirements. It's strictly that one dimension or two dimensions, I guess. Right?
I think it's on us though, to mark a condition that the larger remaining parts, I think it was lot one. I don't have the plan in front of me, but I think lot two was the nearest one. Lot one was the rear. You know, shall not be further subdivided. I don't think we can rely on the planning board to do that because if they don't do it, we're stuck.
Okay. As long as we can, I, I think. Man, I'm okay with it. I do think that they take a broader view of the whole thing and therefore could put it in better context, but I have no opposition at all to putting it on there because I think it does make sense and it limits kind of the extent of any variance we're providing.
Can I just issue one small caution is that I, I, I agree with what Jay's saying that you should, you know, the planning board would reiterate your decision not to allow further division. I would just say that the second lot could be made larger. So I would say that what's shown on the plan of record is a minimum lot size requirement.
Yeah. And maybe we can put in the finding of fact, or well, I guess it's not fact, but that there's
Oh, right.
opportunity to make the second lot larger than that shown and it would, you know, our, our deliberation is that it'd be given the size of the overall lot, it would be better served to increase that from, but yeah, I don't know what, as a, can I offer put a condition that it?
Well, you couldn't just say no more than two lots on the total property.
We could say, I think Karen's getting at it. It did look odd to have a fifteen acre lot and then one that just meets the minimum. But I think that's what Joyce was just trying to show. This is what you could do. Yeah. We'd like to encourage somewhere in, in the, I, I don't know if, if you guys can think of a good condition, we could put it in. But I, I think if at the very least we put it in the discussion that it's our feeling that it the second lot, the larger that can make it, the better or the more in congruence with the intent of the zoning by law would be. Not to mention, as I said, it's going to help them with their septic and everything else.
One other thing to consider is that, so Joyce mentioned this was the Marsland Institute. So this structure has nine to 10 bedrooms, a predate zoning. So under the conversion provision could be made into a multifamily. You may want to consider restricting that.
Okay. That's, that's the big one. Or that, the one on the big lot.
Yeah. Single family existing to remain.
Yeah.
It's quite large.
Okay. So if they could do that right now if they want it. But so we wanted to, yeah. So I, I think that's actually a great trade off if we, yeah, i- if the lot is subdivided. How does that, okay, can we actually, I mean, yeah, I guess we can, but it seems like an odd condition. It has really nothing to do with the variance itself.
No, but it has to do with the density. And so if, if you're concerned with the density, same issue.
I, I'm okay with it. If we can figure out how to say it. I, it does strike me as something that somebody probably could challenge if they really wanted, but that's okay. And they lose the whole thing. So yeah, let's tie it in there. Okay.
Then did Joyce explain? Is one of the buildings on the smaller lot, is that a garage or are they both dwellings? I don't remember.
Well, only one is a dwelling.
Okay. The other one a barn or, or a garage?
Something like that. Yeah.
I was actually thinking, he could have subdivided this administratively by just demolishing one of those buildings. Right?
Right.
Two buildings, two lots, this would have been, they could have done an eighty-one L. I think. I just, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a subdivision by virtue of the statute where they can create two lots given a number of factors, but area being one of them, and then frontage being the other, which they have on this road. But you can't have multiple buildings on a lot to, so if it's more than a single building on each resulting lot, you can't use that provision of the statute. So I was thinking if one of those was like a, a garage or something that was less than permanent, they could have just gotten rid of that, but.
But they'd still need the, the variance for, they wouldn't, wouldn't they? Because they wouldn't meet the setbacks.
Oh, well, I guess they would as to.
They still need frontage.
Yeah. Well, you could, you'd create the frontage with the road, right? As part of your subdivision, but the existing building would still be a problem.
What's the front, what's the front setback? Thirty feet?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they would have had it if the, well, I guess they wouldn't have had it here because a bigger building looks like more permanent building is the one with the issue.
Yeah, the, the dwelling has the issue.
Looks like it. Got it. All right. Strike that. Either way, this doesn't really bother me that much, at least from the, if we can minimize the density on it.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm okay too, because I think they're clean, they're separated, they're far from others. They it's just really a unique situation.
Are you going to stand this wall right?
Okay. Any other conditions that? Any other elements in our finding of facts? I'm now more sensitive to that since we've been, we've all been challenged on the one that, that I thought was one of our cleaner decisions. But that was, you know, the, our warehouse. So is there anything else that we need put in there?
Do we, do we ever hear the results of that? I mean, so far there's been two appeals, but do they ever report back to us what the court says?
Neither of them are close to trial. They just did the first conference on the Pearl Street issue on the 27th of July.
Yeah.
Okay. But do you generally, do we generally?
Everyone has gotten the whole, it's, it's become much bigger because of that whole traffic issue.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I spent a good hour and a half on the phone with Tina Hind a couple of weeks ago. But it, it was actually very good. I, I talked to her about some of the stuff that we could benefit from some, so like, and encourage a little more cross pollinization of some of the things that's going on like that. Anyway, I think they've got her back.
Do we want to put in something where? I mean, this is, this is going to be shared access here. I was actually surprised. I mean, this is, this is going to be shared access here. I was actually surprised that Goulding Place. Is that, is that a road that the town took?
It's not a road. It's not laid out as a road, which is why she's here to begin with, because there's no frontage.
But all of those other. Other, other driveways that come off of that.
All have legal frontage on Goulding Street.
They just use that for their access.
Yeah.
And they've got. Easement's over, and I think she said, I didn't look at the plan, but.
Okay, I think we should probably. Put in there that the parties shall enter into a shared driveway agreement or shared driveway maintenance agreement before any sale. Because.
Well, I mean, again, isn't that, they're gonna have to go.
It's part of the subdivision process.
Board and do some kind of subdivision, so they're gonna require all that kind of stuff.
All right, then I'm.
Can't sell it with our, our variance doesn't let them sell it. It just lets, that gets them in the door to talk to the planning board.
All right, planning will manage all that stuff then?
Well, we can talk to the planner and make sure she knows what we're thinking. Yeah.
So this is, this is a front and a side setback, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have anything else. Maybe.
Okay. I can't think of. So conditions we we have that. Somehow we want to try and encourage the larger. Size, I guess, I don't know what the condition can be if we're not going to specifically say it, but that that show shall be a minimum. Lot sizes, I don't know, is there any? Anything else we can say? And just encourage it to be bigger. Because we have, we don't have anything else to react to. So.
I like Liz's, I like Liz's condition, which is the total, you know, parcel shall be. No. More than two lots.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think that's.
And I think, John, that's probably the way to do it. I wouldn't. Put a minimum condition to, well, the minimum condition has got to be 30,000 square feet, so. They have to meet the.
That's what I'm saying, and we all thought bigger would be better, and I don't think they disagree, but I presume the planning board will probably. Say something similar. By the time they go to them, they may actually. You know, have looked at and drawn it differently. If you're going to try and lay out a house and create a yard, why would you?
Exactly.
So we want no more than, should it be subdivided, no more than two lots and. All lots should be single family?
Yes.
All subdivided lots should be single family. Because all of these conditions are only in the event they get a subdivision, right? Otherwise, when they don't want to do anything that they can already do now on the lot, yeah. Unless they do that. Okay.
Yes, and then they're looking for 12 and a half feet of relief on the front setback. 12.4 feet and. 5.2 feet on the side setback.
That's just for the setback of, what are they calling it? 120 or 120A?
120 and 120A, yeah, 120A is the one that actually needs it, I think.
So that's the other one, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's lot, lot number two or 120A.
It has shown on the.
I would just.
GLM plan.
Yeah, the GLM.
Yeah, actually, you know, and it's too existing. Maybe we should reference that, that the existing. Sure, I mean, I guess they could rebuild, but no closer than existing.
And it's the GLM proposed lot sketch dated May 27, 2020.
Okay.
And she didn't, she didn't stamp it until June 27, 2020. I don't know if you want, if we want to say that instead. Dating the stamp are a month apart.
I always use the plan date.
Yep. 5/27.
What's the big pond in the front that she said was manmade, but she called it a pool?
It's like this old fashioned cement pond kind of thing.
They made, made their own swimming, swimming hall.
Yeah.
Swim ponds now.
Sure, it hasn't been maintained as it once was.
I used to say in Beverly Hill, at least.
Is that a really big house back there?
Yeah, it was an institution. So at one point it was a religious institution. At one point it was sort of a sober house kind of issue. It has, it has had upwards of 10 bedrooms.
Oh, wow.
Okay. Anything else that you guys want to add to it? All right. We want to make the motion then?
All right, I make a motion that we. Technical problems bad tonight, so I'm sorry. So I'll make a motion that we grant the. Dimensional variance requested for. Or by Diana Harrington for the properties, the property located at 120A Goulding Street. Dimensional variance as, as we discussed and with the conditions we discussed.
Second.
Moved in second. Had any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? John, hi, Jay.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Great motion carries. Thank you. All right.
I can't, I don't think I could sit through the broker one, only because there's going to be so many conditions. Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to probably put, are we going to put conditions? And if we say yes, can we skip, can we, can we jump and do ones that we think are more straightforward to get them done?
I think, yeah, we can.
Yeah, we're gonna get, we're not going to get through everything anyway, so. For everybody.
You want to stop now? Karen, you're tired? Yeah, we can stop. It's fine with me. I just have the hoops one probably is not that many conditions except for people.
Well, it's two, it's two, it's two.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, actually, we do want to.
Do you want me to pre-draft them for you?
Yeah, I mean, let's. With the.
For Wednesday.
Very short discussion on each is for, for Brockerts. Is everybody okay with giving him a permit subject to whatever we want and. Are there, to me, that, that chipping thing is, is what we're going to have to figure out. Is there anything else that's?
No, I mean, I, I'm personally fine with the storage. It didn't sound like the neighbors had any issue with that. I don't think most of the noise is coming from there anyway. I think it's coming from elsewhere. So. You know, he's got to, he's got to operate that equipment within the, the. The decibel level in the, in the ordinance, you know, period. So if Briggs can't do that. There, he's got to do it somewhere else.
The only thing I was thinking is that maybe we put a condition that. Gets in front of it a little like they have to notify. Chris ahead of time, you know, so that, because if it's one or two days, they're going to do it for a day and. Oh, we didn't think it was going to be that loud, you know, I mean, Briggs isn't a bad guy and I probably not, but. It's going to put somebody in the middle that they either they have to demonstrate or they have to. Give us a chance to shut it down so he can be there and shut it down in five minutes as opposed to. Waiting till people call because you could see if it's two days, by the time anybody finds out about it and goes out.
They'll, they'll be done. People will suffer for 48 hours and then they'll be out of there.
Well, I agree, but you know, when it's brought to our attention.
Yeah. And then the only other thing would be to, I would, there was a letter, there was an email back and forth. From the fire chief.
Right.
And there's some waste oil storage, so he's got to get his EPA hazardous waste ID and from the Mass DEP. We could throw that in.
Right, well, I think he's got to do all of that stuff anyway. We can make a note. Okay. So I think.
But I think with, I think Mark made a good point. What I was going to say is. I know if you're recycling like heavy amounts of material, there are, there are state permits required. And what I would want is, what I want to do is make a condition that within a period of time. Even regards to the noise that, that the, either the tenant. Or broker, I think it's going to end up on his shoulders. Does some filing or investigation relative to what is required at the state level to do what he's doing. Because I think there might be further permitting requirements to the activity alone. We could put it. All of our blah, 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 but I think we ought to put on him some active obligation to. To look into the recycling of the, the. Whatever that recycling operation is and whether that is properly permitted at the state level.
I think there's a fine line of whether it's considered composting or not.
And maybe he could tell us what it is and why he doesn't need a permit, but I think we should put on him something so that we're not permitting something locally that might have a. It might have a other obligation that I still want to come back at us. Especially because somebody raised it and it didn't, it dawned on me even before the person raised it. I was thinking to myself. If this is a heavy recycling or composting operation, there's typically a larger permit that's beyond us.
All right, so maybe we can make a. An obligation or make the permit contingent on them providing. Evidence to the board by some date, you know, the end of the year or whatever, that. Necessary. Environmental permits have been. Applied for or obtained. I don't know, something like that.
Yeah.
Because I, we don't know what they are, you know, we can't, it's hard to be explicit, but yeah, and he's obligated to do that, but if he isn't. It's just like he's operated this thing for so many years than according to.
What we can say is confirmation that all applicable. Permitting requirements, you know, have been met. And confirmation should mean you'll have to explain either way. No, I don't need it because of this, or yes, I do because of that.
All right. Yeah. So we can, all right, then we'll. Wordsmith that the next time if. If we need to. Hoops on the special permit side, is there anything? Is anybody have a problem with the, the special permit itself of that as an activity? Just put in the hours of operation. What, Karen, what is the end of quiet hours in Holliston? Is it eight?
So there are, I'm not sure what quiet hours means.
Yeah, I wasn't, I knew it.
The provision under the performance standard section of the bylaw has a provision for. You know, operational noise. It has a condition for temporary construction noise. Has an hour for, you know, maintenance of your yard kind of noise. So I'm not sure what they're referring to as a quiet hour.
Okay.
But it is beyond. I mean, it is not beyond what he's talking about. So he, I understood his. Later end was 8:30.
Yeah, which.
Today through Friday, yeah.
The only thing I could think of was if it was eight o'clock, then maybe we would cut him short a little, but. I, you know, I would rather not because I don't. See it as being problematic, but. I also don't live next door to it, so.
I mean, it's Washington Street. Karen, what's, what's Washington Street traffic daily? 15,000 cars?
No, I agree, and this is a couple bouncing basketballs inside a building is, I think.
I think it's pretty cold, too.
Yeah, I hope it's successful. So, okay. We've got the hours of operation, limits on people, you know, he said. Six, I'd be inclined to make it even a little, I mean. For 5,000 square foot space, we said eight or 10. That way, if it's a young kid and the parent does stay and the weather's bad or whatever, maybe it's. Limited to 10. I was worried a little bit about the traffic flow and ultimately realized it's the one all the way back against rail trail, so. You know, I don't see a lot more there worry about, but whatever you guys think is reasonable, I wouldn't squeeze him.
I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with 10, 10 people.
I, it's also one of those that nobody's ever going to be. Counting and enforcing, but you know, who knows, we've seen that. I don't want somebody to come back. Any year saying, oh. I underestimated, we really need 10 and have to go through all this one. It makes no difference, that's all.
I can clarify with Chief Cassidy and Chris about what the occupancy would be based on the space.
Yeah, but it's significantly more than that. 5,000 square feet or whatever. Well, I think the building's 5,000 and his space is smaller, but. Okay, it's, it's way more than 10. Anything else that we need to condition? Oh, the. The keep the bay doors closed came up and they were fine with that. In fact, they preferred it and intended to anyways, so. Probably should say anytime it's. Going about because they may want to open up to bring stuff in or out or anything, but. Anytime it's under operation. Okay. The. Variance. Thoughts on that? I think you muted yourself, Liz. Oh, no, you, we just didn't hear you. Yeah.
I don't hear her. No.
You're writing, okay.
Technical.
That's weird.
Difficulties, yeah, that is weird.
Chris, could, could you enable chat? She could put it right in there.
Yeah.
So that variance was relative to the residential. Right?
Yeah, within a, within a hundred feet of residential.
Which.
The closest, closest to butter, they, they were in favor of it. People, people have 45 summer.
So. Yeah, I think we probably do need to try to. Massage the hardship, but he, he gave us a little bit on. On that, it's an existing bill, I mean, the shape of the building and the lot is there, the uses. Seems to me very much consistent with the bylaw and. Seems to me very much consistent with the bylaw and then the actual, the unique characteristics of that lot, as well as the adjacent ones, keep it well within the intent of the bylaw. He's well away from other houses. Okay, um. All right, well, we're just getting it, there's no big things, Liz, if, if you get some, you can, if anybody has any other ideas or concerns, chip on the Karen, I just wanted to make sure before you waste your time writing something, we're on the same page with things. And it sounds like it, so.
Yeah. The application is also fairly detailed.
Yeah.
Information.
That should work. Now, as long as nobody has big issues and that we're all on board with the concept, we can draft the decision and tweak it, and then.
On Goulding, I was just thinking, on the, um, is it Goulding, is that the one?
Goulding, 120.
What was the next one we did?
175 Lowland.
I had, I had another condition I wanted to add that one. Oh, Brokert, I would think we should use, you know, I think we should add some way best efforts provision relative to noise. You know, that the, that the composting tenant shall, you know, utilize best efforts to mitigate the noise issues. Because he did mention, you know, maybe there's a way for them to, you know, enclose that.
Yeah.
That operation, so.
Maybe we just put a condition that says that.
Will mitigate?
Yeah, because he, in theory, he's supposed to anyway, but if we put it in there, then it puts his permit at risk if, if they don't, you know, if they blatantly disregard it. Maybe it's that, then it's up to him to work it out with Ralph, to either find a quieter way or don't do it.
It would be.
It's either that or we don't allow that, you know, we, we could write the permit for everything but that if we want.
Well, I would rather issue the permit subject to a condition that they manage.
I would too.
Manage the existing operations so that they aren't in violation of the noise, noise ordinance. Plus, provide us proof that they have all the necessary state permits to do the activity. If you have those two together, and they can't do that, and we find out that there is a noise violation issue, then they're violating their permit, so it's enforced.
I think if we have it in there explicitly, you know, then it makes, it's, it's not an accident that they did.
The other activity is relatively passive.
Yeah. And it's been happening, so, yeah, if he solves his noise issue, then.
Sorry, I didn't mean to go back on it, I just, I felt like.
Better to get it now, we'll, can do it later when we do it. All right, and cell tower, any concerns?
Now, the, the, the enclosure, I mean, the only thing you're gonna see is the enclosure and, you know, there's an, there's an elevation drawing of it, it's, you know, white vinyl fence. A, you know, that view from the town hall back towards the church. I mean, it'll, it'll be obstructed by the fence, but other than that, you really don't see much of anything.
Yeah, if they don't have a generator, there's nothing else, so. Okay, that was.
Do it like this more often, like Karen has the difference in front of us, so we can say. Approved as written.
You know the way we think, could you write these up before the hearings?
Want me to, I will.
That's what Peter does, but.
Yeah, he always says, not to sound presumptuous, but I've, but I've, I've attached some findings and some conditions.
Okay, so we'll, we'll try.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, Liz.
Okay, I'm on the phone.
Oh, okay. How are you? Yeah, we were talking about you while you, oh, you could hear us.
Thanks for worrying about my Zoom meetings for tomorrow, but yeah, okay.
Okay, good, so I think we're there, we can hopefully blow through them pretty quickly in the next time we're together and. But, oh, Liz, I know you're not in on the 40B, but if we want to do this, are you around next Wednesday? We could.
Yeah.
We could, yeah, pick you and you could join the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. Like, maybe be a spectator anyway, I don't know that you're, but, um. We can, okay, anything else that's?
Nope.
Diane has a few submittals for Wednesday. We have the peer review on the traffic. I'm not sure if they're submitting any additional supplemental materials, but.
Yeah, weren't they supposed to give us some drainage?
Yeah, they're still working with the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Continued out, so.
Yeah, I haven't looked at any of that, I'll do it before then. All right, well, thanks, guys, that was a long one, but got a lot done there. Thank you, Karen, for getting everything all set.
I'll make a motion, we close the hearing.
Again.
I guess, let me make a motion, we adjourn.
Yeah, motion, seconded that we adjourn. Any opposition?
None.
Who's in favor? I guess we have to.
John.
Jay. Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks all.
Chris and Chris on this week.
Yes, thanks, Chris, it was a long, long, long night and week.
I guess he's with us.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chris.
Exactly sure who that is.
Back to back.
Yeah, Chris is, Chris is every night usually.
Yeah, I just, I, I watched last night, I just put on Hcat and sat on the couch and listened for about an hour and a half.
Yeah, I put my earphone, ear.